Like to call the meeting to order, and I'll start with the land acknowledgement. So as we gather this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and our community that we are meeting on the traditional territory of the Algonquin people. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history, and we are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. I'd also like to note, as announced at the Development and Property Committee, we are now proud to display the Algonquins' Picouacan Gonne flag outside of council chambers to recognize the important relationship that we have with them as our neighbors and friends. Please stand for a moment of silent reflection.
Certainly can. councillor Bennett.
Present.
councillor Bros.
Present.
councillor Doncaster.
Present.
councillor Donahue.
Here.
or Nemo.
Present.
councillor Jardini.
Present.
councillor Grills.
Here.
councillor Yon.
Here.
councillor Lynch.
Here.
councillor Mackenzie.
Present.
councillor Mayville.
Present.
councillor Murphy.
Here.
councillor Nicholson.
Present.
councillor Service.
Here.
councillor Watt.
Present.
councillor Weir.
Here.
and councillor Wilmer.
Present.
Warden, you have quorum.
Thank you. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, we'll move forward, thank you. And I'd like, everybody has read the minutes, of course, in their package, and what I'd like to do is do two motions. The first motion would be for the minutes, to approve the minutes of October 19, but I need two members of council from last council, so if I could have a mover for acceptance of the minutes of October 19, 2022. So councillor from Deep River, and seconded by councillor from Amundston-Bromley. You've heard the motion, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None, it's carried, thank you. And with that, if I could have a motion to approve November 23, 2022, December 12, 2022, and December 21, 2022. If I can move a mover, councillor from Bonshire Valley, seconded by councillor from Horton. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None, it's carried, thank you, council. I had to peek around the screen to see Keith. With that, I'll move to my address. During the months of December and January, I attended forty meetings on county business. And on December 21, I attended the OTO, Ontario Highlands Tourism Organisation Holiday Event, Sip and Sample for Good Shear, held at Okennys Craft Spirits in Pembroke. On January 12, I attended Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus inaugural meeting held in Kingston. I was acclaimed the chair, and Peterborough County Warden Bonnie Clark was acclaimed vice-chair of the caucus for 2023. During the meeting, the members reviewed the history and accomplishments of the caucus, as well as a preview of Eastern Ontario Paramedic Services Situational Overview, key messages, and the 2023 budget. On January 22 to 24, I attended, along with other members of county council, the Roma Annual Conference in Toronto. And during the conference, the following Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus events were held, a multi-ministerial delegation with the Ministers of Municipal Affairs and Housing and Children, Community and Social Services, and Parliamentary Assistance with the Economic Development, Job Creation, and Trade and Infrastructure. We had a delegation with the NDP Caucus, we also had a delegation with the Liberal Caucus, and a delegation with Minister Paul Calandra, Minister of Long-Term Care, and a delegation with Minister Sylvia Jones, Ministry of Health. And a list of the delegation meetings for County of Renfrew are in item five of the Finance and Administration Committee report. Congratulations to councillor Jennifer Murphy on being elected to the Roma Board of Directors for 2023 to 2027. And a thanks to all members of county council and their respective councils who worked hard, not that we had to work that hard, but in supporting Jennifer.
It was the mince.
It was the mince.
The mince won the election.
Yeah, yeah, and I, you know, that was my contribution, so I'm glad to hear. On January 26 and 27, I will be attending the AMO board meetings, and the topics that will be discussed will be housing and homelessness advocacy for 2023, collaborative waste management efforts, roadside zoos, municipal support for independent electricity, system operator procurement projects, and the Cannabis Act 2018 legislative review. On behalf of council, I wish to express our sincere condolences to the family of former Lieutenant Governor David Onle. Mr. Onle served the province with honour and distinction from 2007 until 2014. As lieutenant governor and throughout his life, he worked tirelessly to raise public awareness about accessibility issues, encouraging people to see ability rather than disability. He was also a great champion of expanding reconciliation efforts with Ontario's indigenous peoples and his role as representative of the Crown, work that continues to this day. His contributions to the province and his unwavering commitment to public service will long be remembered and celebrated. On behalf of council, I wish to express our sincere condolences to Director of Community Services Laura Lepine and her family on the passing of her mother Patricia Lepine on December 18. Thank you to county council and management staff for your participation in the strategic planning sessions on January 16 and 17. We made some great progress, and I look forward to working with you all to define our future goals, our objectives, and an action plan. Today is Bell's Let's Talk Day, a day dedicated to moving mental health forward in Canada through the promotion of awareness, acceptance, and action. I encourage all those in attendance, in person and virtually, to visit letstalk.bell.ca for resources and information. I will remind those assembled here of the following: the County of Renfrew, experience our history, share our future. This concludes my address for this session of county council. And now, a call on director Davis, please.
Thank you very much, Warden. Today, I'm honoured to be here and to talk about the Wardens Community Service Awards. So for some of the new councillors, and some of the people watching on video, and some of our honoured guests at the back, so what I'll do is I'll do a brief background and then introduce the winners for the Wardens Community Service Awards. So the annual County of Renfrew Wardens Community Service Awards are a meaningful way to recognise and thank an individual, a not-for-profit business, and a for-profit business. Individuals in our community step up in many ways to improve and strengthen the quality of life we enjoy here in Ottawa Valley. From participating in and organising community initiatives, devoting their time and energy to politics, supporting social responsibility, mentoring or inspiring children and youth, and celebrating our culture and heritage here in Renfrew County. For-profit businesses are significant contributors to the community wellbeing. Many for-profit businesses sponsor sports teams and youth groups, support charities, or contribute to the arts and culture. Not-for-profit businesses, organisations in Renfrew County contribute to and assist community members facing a wide range of challenges, and often these organisations offer services and support to those most in need. Each year, a selection review committee comprised of the County of Renfrew, the warden, County of Renfrew warden, the CAO Craig Kelly, and one member of county council, select the award recipients. Nominees are considered in each of the three categories: individual person, not-for-profit business, and for-profit business. All nominees are considered on the basis of a criteria. For example, the long-term impact in the community, and how long the nominee has been active in the community. Leadership: how the nominee's contribution has made a difference in the community, who benefited from the nominee's contribution, how the nominee's contributions to their community sparked others to become involved, overcoming challenges to make contributions in their community, and how has the nominee become a role model for others in the community. So at this time, I'm honoured to introduce the winner of the individual Wardens Community Service Award, Mr. Daryl O'Shaughnessy of Armpryor. Daryl, if you could come up, please. So while Mr. O'Shaughnessy is coming up, just a brief background for Mr. O'Shaughnessy for those who don't know him. So Mr. O'Shaughnessy is a long lifetime volunteer that is a constant force for positive change in the greater Armpryor community. Daryl brings his passion for volunteerism to various causes, including the Armpryor Dragon Boat Club, Greater Armpryor Seniors Centre, Seniors Active Community Living, The Men's Shed, and the Town Corporate Services Advisory Committee. Mr. O'Shaughnessy was the creation of the more inclusive and age-friendly community. In his role as the Chair of the Greater Armpryor Seniors Council, he has brought community stakeholders and local seniors together to discuss their ideas and how we can better serve the seniors in the area. Daryl's leadership in advocating for the creation of the Seniors Active Living Centre led to the foundation of the Men's Shed Programme, which currently has thirty-two members, thanks to Mr. O'Shaughnessy. So Mr. O'Shaughnessy, thank you very much, and welcome.
I'd like to offer my congratulations. I've watched some of Mr. O'Shaughnessy's accomplishments from a distance, especially impressed with your Men's Shed initiative. It was a gaping hole in our assistive network in the community, and very impressed with it. The foresight and the ability to put it together as well as you have is amazing, and so thank you on behalf of our community.
Thank you very much.
Just get you over here.
Oh, wow.
And then we can get you to speak.
Okay. Beautiful.
I was thinking we take Dan outside.
Yeah. Thank you so much for this, this is wonderful. It's quite a flash from the top of my head.
Have you seen mine?
Yeah, I have.
There we go.
Do you want to go ahead and say a few words?
Yes, I would. It's not going to be long, and don't be frightened here. Anyway, thank you, thanks. Thank you, Warden, and county councillors. This award is totally, totally unexpected, but it means a great deal to me and my family, so I thank you once again. But I just want to say that my father used to say that you can achieve anything that you want, as long as you surround yourself with people a heck of a lot smarter than you are, but also to have a common vision or a vision going forward. So I must accept this award on behalf of the communities that I serve. I want to say that when my wife Betty and I moved to Armpryor about fourteen years ago now, we wanted to establish a Dragon Boat Club. But first, we were told that we had to sell the idea to the great Glenn Arthur, who at the time was Director of Parks and Recreation for the town of Armpryor, and I worked so hard developing this pitch. And as a result, we were successful, and I remember him saying, "Daryl, why don't we just do this?" And we did. So as a result, we were successful in achieving a trillion grand, and to help purchase our dragon boat, a trailer, paddles, all the safety equipment that we needed. And as a result of that, it helped, we formed the Armpryor Dragon Boat Club. So I must thank Glenn Arthur, I must thank the town of Armpryor, and Carmen Gould, who not only supported this initiative, but also welcomed Betty and I to the town of Armpryor and to this beautiful, beautiful Ottawa Valley. So I want to thank, I just want to say, ladies and gentlemen, that anything that I've accomplished is through teamwork. So I want to thank Armpryor Regional Health, I want to thank the town of Armpryor, Townships of McNab-Brayside, Rotary, Lions, and Optimus Clubs, the Royal Canadian Legion, as well as individual members of our community who have stepped up and delivered every single time without question over the years. I also want to thank, bear with me, this means a lot to me, ladies and gentlemen, I also want to thank my beautiful wife Betty O'Shaughnessy for her support, for her support, her understanding and commitment, despite always shaking your head at me and saying, "What have you got yourself into now?" So ladies and gentlemen, next steps for me, this is a great opportunity for me. We need to develop affordable housing in the greater Armpryor region. We're in a dire need. Number two, I want to continue with your blessing to market our men's sheds, the men's sheds throughout the county of Renfrew. I want you to know that the men's shed movement is a social healthcare innovation, and it does keep our senior men productive, active, healthy, and engaged. And in Armpryor, the Armpryor and McNab-Brayside men's sheds, we are the fastest-growing men's shed in Canada. And lastly, with our community's growth and development, especially focused on seniors' issues throughout the county, we need to establish a seniors' advocate reporting to county council. I think it's very important that we do that now. So ladies and gentlemen, this is such a great honour for me, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, really. Now I'll shut up.
Well, if you could just stay here for one more second, our great friend, MPP John Yakubowski, has an award for you as well.
Good to see you again, John.
May I say a few words? Thank you very much, Warden, Imoan, congratulations to you once again. I do, before I start, Daryl, I want to congratulate all the re-elected members of council and the new members of county council, which certainly in my tenure as MPP, I've not seen this many new members of county council. So our best wishes to all of you, you know where I am, if you ever need me, don't hesitate to call, and I look forward to working closely with each and every one of you over the next four years. So let's, Daryl O'Shaughnessy. So I first met Daryl when we were talking to a group of folks, including Eric Hanna at Armpryor Regional Health, and, oh God, name escapes me now, worked for Jim Deloria there, great guy, and the initiative to redevelop the Grove Nursing Home in Armpryor. And at first, I said, "Who is this guy? Like, he is on top of everything, and I've never met, you know, I've met a lot of people, Daryl, and I don't meet too many people that are this blatant in their advocacy for others." And it was just, it was so refreshing to meet a man who just always was thinking about someone else, not Daryl O'Shaughnessy, but someone else. And we worked together, and Daryl was an integral part of that, we actually got the rules on long-term care bed transfers changed in the province of Ontario as a result of the work that you and the folks in Armpryor did with us. Got the rules changed because never gave up. This is a man that never gives up working for other people. We also, you know, during the pandemic, we had to do some renovations at our office, and who did we call? Daryl O'Shaughnessy and the Men's Project from Armpryor to come in and do those special things, like to protect us and everything else, and they did an absolutely incredible job. I can't, you know, I want to thank the county for recognizing this young gentleman, Daryl O'Shaughnessy, because I know he always thinks of himself as, "What's my next project?", he's never thinking about, "Where do I put my feet up?", but where do I plant my feet next to get something else done? And I see councillor Lynch, he's nodding in agreement because he knows Daryl as well as anybody in what he has done for people in and around the town of Armpryor, and Mark Ewett as well. So thank you very much, Daryl, congratulations, and really appreciate the efforts that you make. And I also want to, it's not as fancy as that nice piece of wood, but I have a certificate for your recognizing, your, oh, we've got Debbie going to take a picture, look at that. How do I look? How's my light in that camera, it's not much better, right?
How's our hair? That's the main thing, right?
Come over here.
Okay. Do you want to hold that?
Well, you better have that up, that's the big one.
Okay. Well, it's all important here, right? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Geez, let's not kill him on the way out, eh?
So at the end of the, at the end of the awards, we'll take a ten-minute break, and
I'll invite the recipients, and John, and the respective members of county council to the lobby, and we'll take a larger shot so that all of the supporters of our award winners can share in the moment. And Mr. Davis again, please.
Thank you, Warden. For the next category for the Wardens Community Service Award is the business category. I'd like to do a drumroll, but I'm not that good at that, so the winner of this year's award for the business category is the Eganville Leader. So I'd like to ask Mr. Tracy to come up, and while he's coming up, I'll do just a brief background for his most recent work. So Eganville Leader publisher, Mr. Tracy, announced on May 18, 2022, that in honour of the 120th anniversary of the leader, he was going to sponsor a huge fundraiser event on June 17, 2022, for the Ukraine relief efforts. The Renfrew County community donated over $110,000, which helped the local Ukrainian community and the people of Ukraine to build community and the people of Ukraine to build bridges between Canada and Ukraine. And this is just one initiative through the years that Mr. Tracy and the Eaganville Leader has done since 1902. So the leader and the publisher has unselfishly helped the community in fundraising events for over $10 million throughout the years to the community. So thank you very much and welcome.
As Jason noted, this isn't a one-off for Gerald. He's been doing things for 50 years, I think probably from your, or 60 years, from your paper route at least. He's always been a generous supporter of the community. His community does not end at the borders of Eaganville or Bonshire Valley. He's spread across the county. Anything of interest to the community is of interest to Gerald. So we really appreciate your efforts, your time and your wisdom. I know, you know, we call on you periodically for conversations about projects and then how things should operate and you're very quickly to offer either to help or give some direction and assistance that's notable and necessary. And thank you very much for that.
In some ways, I wish I had a gown because my sports jackets don't close anymore the way they used to. Where do I start? Well, about a year ago, coming up on a year anniversary, like all of you people in this room, we saw what was happening in Ukraine. And every night when my wife and I were watching the national news, we just literally had tears in our eyes from watching that cruel invasion of that country. And I kept saying, we have to do something to help those people. Well, of course, we still had the COVID-19 regulations in effect and I thought, what are we going to do? We could organize something, but it could be all thrown out the window if we get another, more regulations to stop it. Anyway, so we sat there through February, March and April, watching the news night after night. And then one of our columnists, Joanna Zummer, did a story on a little fundraiser that took place in Willno. And it was a group of people up there helping a Ukrainian family who had just come to the Madawaska Valley. And Joanna arranged for me to meet Tetiana, who was going to Ottawa that Saturday to pick up a young girl by the name of Vita. So we arranged to meet in Eaganville at the tourist information center. And after I met Vita, I went home and I said to my wife, Wanda, we are doing something. So we put together a plan that we were going to do an auction and start a fundraiser and we'll tie it in with the 120th anniversary of the Eaganville Leader. And within, I think we had a five-week window. And within five weeks, and then of course, the night of the celebration, we raised $110,000. $80,000 of that, thank you. We, we kept in constant touch with the Ukraine Embassy in Ottawa because what do you do with this money once you have it raised? Where does it go? And of course, they, they came up to Eaganville a couple of times. We were honored to have a visit by the Ukrainian ambassador who came to receive a cheque. We, we presented them with $80,000 that went to President Zelensky's United 24 Fund, which is invested back into the country to help people with medical, medical aids, to buy drones, to do whatever they can to help those people in Ukraine. And I couldn't help but think when we were starting the meeting today, singing Oh Canada. And we have several people in the audience from Ukraine today. And I was thinking, glorious and free. That's what we have here. And these people are displaced from their country because of the actions of one man. Anyway, this award does not go to the Eaganville Leader so much as it goes to a group of wonderful people who I had the pleasure to invite to do the work. And I want to introduce them. William Enright. Stand up, William. William's a story unto himself. He's one of the most comprehensive volunteers you will ever find. He is all over doing his, whatever he can for the community. Sadly, William is moving home to Ireland this spring. He's been, he's reconnected with two brothers he never knew he had. Boo to ancestry.ca. So, but I'm, I'm sure William will keep in touch because he has become a very integral part of Bonshire Valley Township and of course, a wider part of Renfrew County. With William, we also had Zig Minta, former mayor of Bonshire Valley. When you want to get something done, you surround your people, you surround yourself with like-minded people who don't talk, they take action. And Zig is one of those guys, give him a bone and you'll not see a dog around because he won't share it. Joanna Zummer, she's a columnist with us. She's somewhere in Pembroke, but she was unable to get here because she has someone at a medical appointment. And of course, Tetiana, and I'm going to mix this up a little bit, Mois Joubé. Tetiana is a one-person army. She's been in the Madawaska Valley, Masque Island, Barry's Bay for about 20 years. She's in real estate and she does a little bit of work at the Willno Tavern, so you may see her there if you go in sometime. Tetiana is from Ukraine and the stories she can tell you, she could keep you here all day. She has collected, I don't know how many boxes of goods from all over Renfrew County, shipped them to Toronto and arranged to have them sent to her home country to help those, the people most in need. Thank you so much, Tetiana, and we'll keep that, we'll keep coming to you with more stuff. Like Darrell said, I, I, we should get our wives together, Darrell, because I have a wife who puts up with a lot. I'd like to introduce my wife, Wanda. She's been rolling her eyes for 52, well, no, not quite 52 years. She's been rolling her eyes for a long time because I do get some brainwaves from time to time. We also have several people from Ukraine with us in the audience and I'd just like to introduce Yulia and her husband, Yanya Parchinko. Yulia and Vita. Vita, stand up. Vita is the younger sister who I spoke of. They have chosen to make this place their home. Yulia's husband was involved in making camouflage netting back in Ukraine to hide and protect the, the military components from, from the Russians. And I think if I understand quickly, he was granted permission to come to Canada. I think there's some kind of rule that if you have three or more children, you get to leave the country. I'm sure it's not quite right, but that's how he ended up here. But you can just imagine the families who have been split and displaced and who have lost everything. So they're beginning their new lives over here and it's, they were out in our, at our celebration in Eaganville last year and it was just a pleasure to have them, have them with us. So thank you very much. I also want to introduce Tetiana's daughter, Maggie. Maggie, stand up, please. Maggie's Ukrainian, but her English is better than mine. She goes to Bishop Smith here in Pembroke and she has with her today, her science teacher, Mark Conrad. You might wonder why, why am I bringing up a, a science teacher? Mark Conrad has collected, I don't know how much, Mark, you could blurt it out, tons of donated goods from this region that have gone down to southern Ontario, put into canisters and have been shipped to Ukraine. The needs are just unbelievable over there and we know that just from watching what's going on. I don't think I've forgotten anyone, but thank you all so very much. The fund did raise $110,000, as I said. $80,000 went to President Zelensky's United 24 Fund and the other $30,000 we kept back in Renfrew County to help families like Yulia and her, and her family by giving so much per adult and so much per child when they arrive in Renfrew County. And we've also assisted Tetiana in providing funds to get the materials, the donated materials down to Toronto area to be boarded on a flight for Ukraine. Mr. Warden, thank you very much for the award. I think it's the second time I've been up here. I think it was up here in 2011 when there was another young fella here, Mr. Bob Sweet, the ex-mayor of Pittawawa, Emeritus. Bob, I think I was the recipient of the individual award that year and that was the first year of the, the awards that were instituted under your leadership. It's good to see you again, Bob. You know, we talk about the power of the press and I don't talk about the power of the press in a bad way where we can destroy a politician or make a politician like Yak over there. I talk about the power of the press in the sense what it can do for a community. I go hand in hand with fundraising and the press and any, any initiative I've undertaken, whether it was the building of Fairfield, the building of the senior center in Eaganville, the rebuilding of the two churches in Eaganville, my tenure as chair of Hospice Renfrew, or my tenure as chair of whatever, I have always used the newspaper to assist in our fundraising efforts. It is powerful because of the generosity of our readers who respond. I mean, who else would give Yakubuski and I $60,000 to pedal our bikes from Eaganville to Renfrew for Hospice Renfrew? And I know I had to drag him over the finish line twice, but it's just amazing, the generosity of the people of Renfrew County. So this award, I dedicate this award to the committee who helped raise these funds and also to the people who donated. And again, I thank my wife for putting up with all the extracurricular activities. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. And if you could just stay in place and I'll invite our friend, John, up and, and as he's coming up. Thank you very much on behalf of the Ontario Winter Games for your, your generosity in, in providing us with a banner across the top of your paper and then also the great articles that have been produced outlining the many athletes from, from the county. So thank you very much for that. And a very quick story, when Gerald was putting together the Ukraine effort, he, we were chatting about something and he said, you know, I'm not sure how I'm going to, I'm going to get donations with a tax receipt. And so I said, well, you should try Bonshire Valley. Under the municipal act, they're allowed to issue tax receipts. And before I could send Jennifer an email, she was sending me one saying, what did you tell Tracy? So that's how fast he moves.
Thanks very much for that, Peter. That, that really increased the, the donations, but I, I did forget to mention Bonshire Valley. A lot of people came on board once we got rolling and the township provided the arena free of charge, the office staff to do the receipts and that, you know, receipts mean a lot to certain people and it was, it was nice to have that service, Jennifer. So, and you know that we, we certainly have appreciated that. So again, thank you very much.
Well, thank you again, Warden, and thank you, Gerald, for all your efforts. I thought I'd have something to say, but then at the end you took, took everything I wanted, but it, but it does, some of it does bear repeating, but I do want to, I don't know if I can propose a motion at county council. I don't think I have the legal authority, but I'm going to do it anyway. So Gerald was up here in 2011. He got an award from then Warden Sweet and he's receiving one today from Warden Emon. And I, I just would propose that if he's up here again in the future receiving an award, that it also include a new sports jacket. Perhaps one with a bigger waistline. Anyway, Gerald, Gerald did talk significantly about the event to raise funds for Ukraine that took place last summer in Eaganville. And he covered off so much of the important things and of course, so many of the people that were involved in that as well. And I wanted to go back a little bit. I think Centennial Park, I don't think you mentioned Centennial Park and your involvement in, in that. So I remember, I've known Gerald for a long time, not as long as Wanda, and I haven't had to roll my eyes as often either. But Gerald is one of these people that if he senses a need, then that need must be addressed. And he has seen that need in his community on repeated occasions over the last 40 years. A need, what do we do to address that need? So it's Centennial Park, the, the loss of the two churches, which were massive fundraising efforts for those of you who were here and remember those, those events. Fairfield's, which, you know, fits in my time as, as MPP as well. It is event after event after event that Gerald has, and he has used the power of the press for that good. Everything we do today, everything we have today can be used for good or it can be used for things that aren't good. And we see evidence of that every day across social media and its many platforms. But Gerald has taken the Eaganville Leader, which with all due respects to every other paper that exists, I think is widely regarded as quite frankly, the best community, family-owned newspaper in the entire country. And he has taken, that's right. And he has used that platform, not a social media platform, but a red media platform. There's not a person in this room that hasn't, that can't identify with stories that were written in the Eaganville Leader because they felt it was important to the community. So notwithstanding all of the great things that he has done, all of that is motivated by love of community. So Gerald, for you to receive this award today, I'm not surprised in the least, but I'm honored with you and I want to thank Renfrew County for recognizing the efforts of this man, of course, with respect to the tremendous work that was done to raise 110, think of that, think of that amount, $110,000, not over a month or two, at one event. Yes, there was the work goes into, there's always background work, but at one event, $110,000 for the people of Ukraine, $80,000 that went directly there. The effort that goes into that and the importance of it and the magnitude of it when you consider the population involved. So I want to thank the county for recognizing the efforts of Gerald Tracy, not just his efforts to help Ukraine, along with many others that bear recognition as well, but his long-term efforts to make our communities better. Thank you.
My sports jacket's still fit by the way. Where is the milk stool?
Peter, I think he's angry for a mask.
But I bought them bigger on purpose, I was planning for the future.
Thanks very much, John. My parting note, this is the fifteenth anniversary year of Hospice Renfrew and, uh, next week we're starting to sell tickets on a twenty twenty-three SUV and, um, fourteen other prizes to bring it to fifteen, to celebrate fifteen years. So you'll see some information about that. Hospice Renfrew is a gem. Thank you.
And again, uh, Gerald, if you and your supporters could wait, we'll have a picture outside when we take a bit of a break. Thank you. And again, Mr. Davis, please.
Uh, thank you, Warden, and last but not least, uh, for the not-for-profit category, uh, the Ottawa Valley Cycling and Active Transportation Alliance, or AVKATA, is the award winner. So if I could, Mr. Ron Moss, to come up to the podium if you could. And a little background to AVKATA, so the County of Renfrew, a bit of a unique situation, but it has, has happened before. So the county received six nominations under the individual category of the award system, two of which demonstrated their volunteerism and commitment to AVKATA. That being said, there are more people involved in the same program, the county decided to award this one to AVKATA for their not-for-profit category. So again, AVKATA is a voice for cyclists and active transportation enthusiasts, enthusiasts in Ottawa Valley advocating for safety and good conditions, bringing people together and encouraging participation. And as a result, Ottawa Valley Cycle Tourism in Renfrew County has never grown, never been big, been bigger. So again, thank you very much, Ron, and, uh, congratulations.
Good to see you. Thank you. I'm just gonna say a couple of words and then.
Yes, of course.
So, uh, it's a real pleasure to present this to Ron and, and his association, his organization, uh, many of his volunteers we've met over the years, uh, whether it was the hottest day of the year last year or any number of, uh, meeting rooms or in the community, uh, uh, I've been approached a number of times, uh, we've sat through committees to talk about road widening and share, share the road and, and specific trails and when you're developing this, would you think of this? Always a, a very respectful conversation, recognizing the limitations of our community as, as they advance the interests of cycling and the benefits of it. And I've certainly appreciated the knowledge, you've been able to call on, on Ron and his group any number of times, uh, for information to very, and very quickly to, I might add, which is unfortunately a, a fact of life when you're hanging around with me. So I, I certainly appreciate that. Thank you. Press up here? Yeah. Over this way? Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Reeve Eamon. Um, this is certainly a wonderful, uh, opportunity for us to, um, share with you. Um, our group certainly would not have qualified for this wonderful award if it weren't for, uh, Warden Eamon and, uh, the county council. Um, the challenge that has come into being with the creation of the KMP Trail and the OVRT and the Algonquin Trail and, uh, the ever increasing popularity of active transportation that was given a boost with hardened shoulders in the County of Renfrew on our county roads and with the addition of these rail trails in a safe environment and of course, the COVID effect. Our group of advocates, some of which are here tonight, this afternoon I should say, or even this morning, who have risen to the challenge of getting people active in our municipalities on the rail trails and for, for the benefit of their health, the economy and climate change. Creating Algonquin Trail, um, Rail Trail Relay and events with catchy titles such as the Monarch of the Mountain, a hundred kilometer ride up and down Foymount Hills at the Tour of Bonne, Bonne, Bonnechere. Uh, while in McNab-Brayside, our Andy Callins is busy creating many events such as the Tour de Poutine, precede meteor shower, uh, at Claybank and Autumn Equinox Hike. I would also like to, uh, point out that this wouldn't have been possible for all those who supported our nomination and I thank you on behalf of, of KATA for all this. Um, AVKATA looks forward to working with the County of Renfrew and other organizations to bring tourism on our trails and in our communities. We have some ideas that we will be bringing forward in the near future and put tourism to work for our economy. On behalf of AVKATA, we thank Warden Eamon and the County of Renfrew for this award.
I'm sorry, John, if you could join us, please.
Well, congratulations, Ron, and to the entire, how do we say that?
AVKATA.
AVKATA? We have a KATA too. His name is Chuck. Making this award and this is something that, you know, probably fifteen years ago, no one would even, maybe would have even considered. But I'm one of the ones that is fortunate to have lived through the tenure of when we've seen the growth of cycling, not just in Renfrew County, but everywhere. And you know, there were times when people felt that they didn't have the responsibility to share the road with cyclists because it was something new for them. But each and every day, people are understanding more and more, not only the, the, um, uh, the fact that cycling is very, very good for you, but they have a total legal right to the road. But that simply isn't enough sometimes because, I mean, the road is only so wide. But as you mentioned, Ron, each and every year, as the County of Renfrew is expanding or re, uh, rejuvenating, rehabilitating highways, they're looking at that extra paved shoulder. And I can tell you, because I've had, I haven't had Ron in my office, but I have had Bob Pelzer and Ish Thielheimer on numerous occasions and on numerous occasions communicating otherwise about the importance of cycling, not just for health, but for the environment and all well, the environment is health, of all so many, many reasons. And I can tell you that advocates such as Bob and Ish and Ron and Andy and Patty who are here today have made a significant difference in affecting provincial policy as well. The work that you did and have been doing was significant in, for example, the rehabilitation of Highway sixty. Those are some of the widest paved shoulders anywhere in the province now, with the exception of you look down twenty-eight where they, at, at, post-construction paved all the, uh, paved all, all the shoulders. But it's a recognition that we need to make, cycling is here to stay. We need to do whatever we can to make it safer, not just for the cyclists, but for those operating vehicles as well. Cause it gives a comfort level to anyone operating a motorized vehicle as well, to know that those paved shoulders are there and it gives everyone, uh, a safer route. I look forward to, uh, continuing to, to work with you people and the fact that you've received this award today, I want to congratulate and thank the county, but it's also a recognition, a public recognition about, we are here now in a new era. Cycling is as much a part of our transportation and our reconna, recon, recreational pursuits as anything else and we do need to do everything we can to welcome it and make it safer. So congratulations and I appreciate the opportunity to address county council and the recipients today.
Uh, MPP Yakubusky, uh, I look forward to your results on our next highway that's gonna show improvements at provincial highway, Highway one forty-eight, that has taken my own personal attention, as my wife can attest. Uh, we have been negotiating with them for quite a few number of years to try and get paved shoulders on Highway one forty-eight and of course, a little bit of a problem between Angus Campbell Drive and, uh, Drive-In Road, if we can work something out there. Thank you so much.
So as you can see, we, um, as you can see, we have some, uh, some very generous people who have donated time, thought and effort, uh, to improving our community. And, uh, we're very fortunate to have them working with us, working for us and, and oftentimes leading us, um, as we consider projects and we consider policy within these chambers. And so we're very fortunate, very fortunate to have them. And I think you've, uh, witnessed some of the, uh, their very strong advocacy skills because they never stop beating the drum about a particular project or a new project and so, or their next project. And so I think, I think that's quite admirable, uh, as most of us in here are project-driven. You know, we finish one and just before, fifteen minutes before, before we finish one, we start the next one. And, and I, I think we can appreciate the kindred spirits that have been shown today by our recipients. With that, I'd like to take a couple of minutes and, and we'll move outside. So with, um, with Mr. O'Shaughnessy, I'd like to invite, uh, County Councilors Mackenzie and Lynch to join us for a picture. And with Mr. Tracy, uh, Councilors Brayside, or Brayside, Councilors Brolson Murphy, you are now James Brayside. And, uh, with Mr., with Mr. Moss, uh, I can't read my own writing sometimes, I'd like to invite, uh, uh, Councillor Service, Councillor Grills, Councillor Lynch and Councillor Weir. I think that encompasses the, the geographic ends of, uh, of the trails. And Councillor Watt, I'm sorry, yes, and Councillor Watt as well. So if you could join us outside and we'll start, we'll head out to the map, uh, just to your right. And for county council, we'll reconvene at about eleven fifteen. Thank you. Thank you.[145.87]
Just as a quick addition, we did some really quick research and we find that we have about 250 kilometres of hardened shoulders which accommodate cycling, walking and all sorts of activities as part of our Share the Road program. I was going to say we had hundreds of thousands of kilometres, but Mike Nolan did know the paddles in here for Lee, so we went out and got the right information. With that, I'll call on Chair Murphy to deliver the finance and then, oh, I'm sorry, correspondence. Is there any correspondence?
All items of correspondence have been forwarded to the appropriate committees, but just note, Warden, that we did receive a letter from former CAO Terry Lapierre and thanks for the recognition that you provided at his retirement function here in the city. And a note saying he did enjoy his five years while working for the County of Renfrew 25 years ago. So, thank you, Warden.
Thank you. And now, we'll call on Chair Murphy, please.
Thank you, Warden. Members of County Council, we here Finance and Administration Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Under information, item number one, the Renfrew County and District Health Unit and the Renfrew County Place Lease, there's some background there, and we are waiting to hear where they are planning to go. Number two is the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus Newsletter. Number three is the Eastern Ontario Regional Network Newsletter. Number four are Chief Administrative Officers 2023 Goals and Objectives. Number five, as you heard earlier, the Roma Annual Conference, the delegations, and I'm assuming that people will chime in when we get to this item to report on their delegations. Number six is a retirement from our Finance Division. Gordon Tom is leaving us, but Jelenda Douglas is now going to begin her duties as an accounting technician. Number seven is the CRA mileage rates that have gone up dramatically. Under number eight, the Ministry of the Attorney General, appointments of the justices of the peace, and when we get back to this, Mr. Warden, I will report on my delegation with the, or, I'm sorry, the question I asked at the bear pit, and thank you to Councillor Dunnehugh. Number nine are the 2023 insurance rates. Number 10 is MPAC, much consternation over MPAC during the conference. Number 11 is the Board of Health and our, the obligated municipalities' increase from 2022. Number 12 are FIRs, which are from 2021, under resolutions, provincial offences administration charges received. Resolution number FACC 23-01-04, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that Warden emo send a letter to the Honourable Michael Kursner Solicitor General seeking clarification on the number of fines being dispensed in the County of Renfrew during 2022. And number 14, signing authority, resolution number FACC 23-01-05, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, that County Council approve the signing authority for the Corporation of the County of Renfrew Bank of Montreal accounts, be updated to remove Paul Morrow and Debbie Robinson and to add Craig Kelly and Peter Emo. Further, that two of the following four names have signing authority, Peter Emo, Craig Kelly, Jeffrey Foss, Daniel Burke. Number 15 is the 2023 Members for AMO, resolution FACC 23-01-06, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, that County Council approve the 2023 membership fee to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario in the amount of $9,811.42, including HST. Under bylaws, our electronic participation in meetings changed to our procedural. Resolution FACC 23-02, I'm sorry, -01-02, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, that County Council approve bylaw 85-10, as amended, a bylaw to govern the proceedings of the council and committees of the County of Renfrew to amend with the following changes. Section 6.1, electronic participation in municipal meetings. Under the preamble, the preference for meeting attendance will continue to be in person. However, there are circumstances that may prevent a member of council from physically attending the meeting. Where those situations occur, the following shall be the guiding principles. Item A3, a member is ill or injured or has other health-related concerns, for example, a significant rise in airborne viruses. Item A4, a member has been duly appointed to an external advisory role, such as AMO, Roma, FCM or EORN etc., or other municipal business. Item J, in the physical absence of the Chair, section 74G of the procedural bylaw will apply. Item N, in the event of a limited agenda or for special meeting, single-issue requirements, a standing committee or ad hoc committee may choose to meet virtually at the call of the Chair in consultation with the clerk and/or appropriate department head. Section 74, committee meetings. Item G, the committee chair shall preside or alternatively the vice-chair upon request of the Chair. In the physical absence of the committee chair, the vice-chair shall preside. Or in the physical absence of both, such another member of committee, as may be appointed by the concurring vote of a majority of the members of the committee, be present. And there is some background there for your consideration. Under 17, corporate policies and procedures for human resources. Resolution FA-CC-23-01-08, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, that County Council approve the revised corporate policies, A07, criminal record check for prospective employees, A10, staffing, B10, acting pay, E01, hours of work in overtime, and J-01, service awards. Program be approved. And further, that a bylaw to amend bylaw 63-03, being a bylaw to establish human resources, corporate policies and procedures for the County of Renfrew be adopted. And there is background there. Number 18, human resources information system. Resolution FACC-23-01-09, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw to enter into a service agreement with Nortech Solutions Inc. doing business as work Zoom for a three-year period from February 1st, 2023 to January 31st, 2026. And the background is there. And, Mr. Warden, that is the, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members, Bros, Doncaster, Dunnehugh, Emo, Jardini, Yon and Mayville. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Chair. And just as a bit of an information item for our members, on occasion, there'll be things come up in a report that you may wish to have withdrawn and voted on separately. So if there is anything in any of the reports today or in the future, please make a motion to have it withdrawn from the report, because as you know, at the end of the report, we have a motion to accept the report as a whole. So if there's an issue that needs further discussion, or you would wish a vote singularly on that issue, please make the, please make the motion and a second, and it can be withdrawn and discussed separately, then we would pass the report without that item. Yes, a member from Deep River.
And at what point would we extract something from the report?
When we get to the item. For instance, if it's number, I'll pick one that's innocuous, number two, then you would ask at number two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor from Amistock Bromley.
Just as clarity, I want to, Mr. Warden, withdrawn has a particular definition, I think. Severed is typically, if you wouldn't mind elucidating the distinction.
Thank you, yes. It would be severed and voted on separately. Thank you. That's quite clumsy in my language. With that, I'll go through the report, item by item. Item number one, comments, questions, concerns from members of council, Councillor Dunnehugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm most appreciative of actually having some detail provided by the Health Unit. I did ask, invite Mr. Kelly at the Finance and Administration Committee, that there was also at the November 29th meeting of the Board for Renfrew County and District Health Unit, which the Health Committee, by the way, receives the minutes. Within those minutes, it was embedded into our Health Committee report. We did have the CEO of Renfrew County and District provided a report to the Board, and that is what is on the screen now, that is highlighted in red. And I just want, wished to bring that forward because I'm very pleased at the response from the Chair, certainly from the Health Unit. But I think that there is a little bit more clarity provided in that report to the Board, wherein it is not that just that the services will continue in the area, but in fact, there is a commitment towards having a physical presence in the town of Renfrew. And that was perhaps the singular largest concern that I had in September of last year with whether there was going to be a complete vacation of the community with a physical presence. So I'm very pleased, actually, at that. And I think it was appropriate to share that with FNA and by extension with council as well. So I just wished to commend the Renfrew County District Health Unit for providing that clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, we'll move to item two. And item number three. Item four. And item five. Councillor Bros, or Councillor from North Agona Wilberforce, please.
Thank you, Warden. And I just wanted to say that I did have the pleasure of attending the delegation with the Minister of Children, Community and Social Services, Mary Lee Fullerton, as well as Minister Parza for the, who's the Minister of Housing, and Lisa Thompson's assistant, Rob Flack, on the Minister of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs regarding the Line Fences Act. And first and foremost, I certainly want to thank all of the staff who helped prepare the reports, who helped deliver the reports when we were in our delegation. And I have to say that Mary Lee Fullerton, who really does enjoy working with Renfrew County, although she couldn't make any promises on more funding, she is urging all of the, I guess, province to lobby the federal government for more funding, to help offset some of the, certainly, programme costs, and especially in dealing with the, this one was in dealing with the 5% increase that they had given to ODSP clients, but had not extended that to Ontario Works clients. And they're just having such a struggle keeping up with the inflation. The Minister of Housing, the one item I noted that they did pay particular attention to, and that was when Director Lapine asked if they could, if the county could stack some of the funding, so that a project, rather than having to expend funding every year, if that funding could be stacked so that in the event of a larger project, it would make sense that it would give the county more opportunity to fund those. And the Line Fences Act, the great part about that delegation was that Rob Flack, who is my neighbour on Lake Dory, was in charge of that delegation. And he certainly was receptive to the county's suggestion that there be some sort of funding, albeit maybe through the RED grant, that would help offset the costs of the line fencing when it comes to fencing requirements by farmers along the trail. So, yes, once again, they went very well. And I was also very pleased, my own delegation with North Agona Wilberforce regarding the intersection in Golden Lake. The Minister of Transportation, Caroline Mulrooney, made it clear that they're starting the consultation process next month to look at making some changes to that intersection. So that was also very good news. Thank you. That was it.
Thank you. And I believe Councillor from Amistock Bromley, I was in your delegation, you did a super job, so please.
Thank you. So certainly, very pleased to have a delegation. In fact, it was with the Parliamentary Assistant to the Minister of Health, Don Gallagher-Murphy. Very pleased, very welcome from the Parliamentary Assistant. Certainly not at this point, I think, by and large, what VTAC is, what it does for our community, how vitally important it is for our community, is we are now in a, an environment where 28,000, 30,000, which represents about 28% of the population, are now orphaned, do not have a family doctor. And that ultimately, through the establishment, initially of the assessment centres, but as it has evolved substantially since then, we have come to rely on this in that set of circumstances. So, in the end, the Ministry of Health, it has been impressed upon them for some time, both the predecessor and with Minister Jones at AMO, and they, and certainly the Premier must keep that in mind, and our MPP John Yakubowski has certainly had a megaphone in support of this as well. Where we landed late in the day just yesterday was specifically, this is known, it is checking basically all of the boxes of the intentions of this government to transform health in Ontario, which is to meet the patients in their home, to reduce hallway medicine. This is doing all of those things. But we have unfortunately each year been cap in hand going to the province to find the funding for this. So essentially, the table was turned, if you will. We have provided them all of the information on how vitally important this is, the incredible value that it brings to our community, and by extension, could be bringing to others. But we need to find that mechanism that now brings this annual reliable predictable funding, that it is part of the health funding in the province of Ontario, as much as the standing funding, the paramedic services generally to healthcare, et cetera. And that is the priority for us. There was certainly a receptiveness to that, but at this point, they are still engaged in trying to establish where this, where this has to be. And we also were seeking to have a unified approach. As it stands now, there is a separate funding stream that comes through for the medical receptionists, the assessment centres, the community paramedics, the administration, and that adds coming through our prior regional health. But the doctors themselves that are participating in this are paid through the billing codes, and we need to find a means to consolidate that, to have that reliable funding for both what we have here and what could be so incredibly valuable to other communities as well. They certainly, we are all on the same page that that's the next step, and that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's a, I'm going to borrow a phrase, it's a three P process. It's, you know, yesterday was part of producing the information. It is proceeding slowly, and we have to have patience. And I think that's, you know, that's kind of the watchword for us with this, is we're producing information. And we are, it is proceeding in that, you know, the ministry is actively considering our request and recognise the value that VTAC brings to our community. And then, you know, they're encouraging us to have patience and wait as they deliberate. So I think, you know, there's more than one spoonful of patience we're going to have to swallow in the next little while, but we're capable of doing that. And I think I saw a hand, and so first of all, thank you to the member from Amistock Bromley. It was a superb presentation, full of facts and information, and it flowed very nicely. So thank you. And I think I saw a hand, a member from Bonshire Valley, please.
Thank you, Warden. I'm going to follow Councillor Bros in saying that Bonnashire Valley had two delegations, but I think they are, they would be of interest to all of County Council. First of all, we had a meeting with Caroline Mulrooney, the Minister of Transportation, regarding on-demand transportation in rural Ontario and electronic vehicle trudging systems. So anybody that's on the 6D corridor, we were rallying for all of us. And secondly, I had the honour of meeting the Solicitor General, Michael Kursner, regarding firefighter certification. And interestingly, the Ontario Fire Marshal, John Peg, was there. So I rallied for all of us that are going to be challenged with retention, or recruitment and retention of our local tier fire departments. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. And we had a delegation with the Parliamentary Assistant for Kinga Sirma, the Minister of Infrastructure, and essentially had three items that we pitched. One was to expand the criteria for ICIF, given that we often don't qualify and we're not sure why. We also talked about additional funding into that fund and a couple of other funds. And the third one was earlier notifications in order to be able to proceed quicker on projects. I'm condensing Mr. Perkins' excellent five-page brief into a 20-second, a 20-second speech, but they're attached to your appendix and you can take a look at them. And then we also had a delegation with Minister Calandra to speak about CMI and the struggles with human resources and attracting. We also, I think, touched on, I know we touched on the use of agencies, and then again, just the continued support for mitigation funding with regards to PPE and the continuing struggles with COVID and serving our community. And so if there's any other questions or comments, all right, seeing none, we'll move to item number six. And on behalf of council, would like to welcome Ms. Douglas to the County of Renfrew and wish Mr. Tom a well-deserved retirement. I have a connection to Gordon. He, a number of years ago, one of his family members was in an adjoining hospital bed with my mother-in-law, and Gordon was quite gracious with her, and in fact convinced her I was not a bad son-in-law to have. He told her all sorts of things that may not have been true. But anyway, she grew to appreciate me, so I have a special affection for Gordon. So with that, we'll move to item number seven. Seeing nothing from County Council, we'll move to item number eight. Councillor from Bonshire Valley, please.
Thank you, Warden. And we sat around in the afternoon before the bear pit, and we were trying to brainstorm what questions should be asked. And Councillor Dunnehugh said, well, you know, the be in your bonnet lately has been the JP's and the, closing the portal. So, and I know that Councillor Bros feels the same way. So at the bear pit, I was able to ask the Attorney General, Doug Downey, about why the portal hasn't been opened. His answer was great, but then he came up to me after, at the reception, and he said he is going to talk to his new Chief Justice, who is on-boarded in May, and that, yes, the portal should be open all the time, or an explanation why it's not open at that time. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, we'll move to item number eight, please. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, item number 10. And we'll, Councillor Amistock Bromley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Just a question, and I would draw council's attention to page 46 of today's chart, that is the attachment. It is the summary. And you will note at the very bottom of page 46, there is the column on the right identifying 2.21% growth. And through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Foss, I will certainly defer to the Chair of the Committee if she so desires, but probably to Mr. Foss, is that 2.21 the number that will be used in budgeting purposes moving forward into 2023 in relation to the long-term plan that has established what was then the 10-year average of 1.48%?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And through you, to the councillor from Amistock Bromley. So our long-term financial plan relies on contribution on an annual basis of new growth, current value assessment growth, so that being building, new buildings or building additions, et cetera. And we have in our long-term plan dedicated those funds to our capital reserves for future rehab- rehabilitation of county infrastructure. The attached document to item 10 references pure CVA growth, not weighted growth, weighted by tax ratios, and we'll talk a little bit about this, especially for our new members of council, when we talk about tax policy in the, in the upcoming months. But I believe the weighted growth that will come forward in the budget document is 2.16%, and it is that growth that we will discuss about, at our budget workshop. So whether or not we dedicate all of it to our infrastructure reserves for future renewal, or if some of that is available to us for other expenses that are coming forward in the 2023 budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor, supplementary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to follow up with Mr. Foss, so I might understand then, the 2.21 is not the weighted figure that is the real growth, that 2.16 is anticipated in fact to be that number? Is that correct?
Through you, Warden, that is correct.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns for item number 10? Seeing none, item number 11. Councillor Abbotson-Bromley, please.
Thank you once again, Mr. Chair, and certainly wish to commend the Board of Health for a, a very reasonable increase. I think beginning just last year perhaps, we started to see the charting of the incredible variance that there has existed in funding to public health, particularly with our variation with our provincial funding partner in that instance. So certainly this is within the budget targets that were set within the county that are in our direct control. I do wish though, just to bring to the attention of, of council, and perhaps more particularly those members of council that do sit on the Board of Health, that you will note, I'll draw your attention to pages 48 and 49, which was the package ultimately that we received from RCDHU. You will note on page 48, there is a discussion of the amount that is anticipated to be received from the province, and it is just slightly over $13,000 over last year. Based, I had sat on the Board of Health, so I am familiar with what the provincial grant was last year. This represents a 0.25% increase. So where I'm going with this is that the province increase is going to be 0.25. The increase required of the obligated municipalities is 2%. This is no longer, we are not addressing the change in the funding formula from the former 75-25 to the 70-30, and I know this is quick for those of you who are new to the council. That has been adapted, and there is mitigation funding being received directly from the province, which I am enormously grateful for. It's been incredibly value, valuable to the county, to all of the obligated municipalities to have offset that cost. But if this is to continue this imbalance, we're going to shoot through even that target of 70-30, that I believe it is incumbent to continually be advocating, both in this room and with our funding partners, that is the township of South Algonquin and the city of Pembroke, that the, the inequity cannot continue on an ongoing basis, or we are going to shoot right through 70-30 if the province cannot be relied on to be increasing their funding of public health. It is important to note, for full transparency, the obligated municipalities are so obligated through statutory obligation. The province has no statutory obligation to provide any funding, and you will see one year where they provided exactly that. So I do wish particularly for the members of the Board of Health to certainly raise that as you are developing your budget. This is simply the notice to the obligated, but as you are developing the budget, that it may be something that you wish to, to have on your agenda, that the province is not keeping pace.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions, concerns? Councillor from Deep River, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And just, just for a little more clarity for some of the newer members, the, we're looking at funding for the Board of Health at 1.767 million dollars. That mitigation funding that we're getting from the province that's offsetting the change is in the realm of $900,000 that we're looking. So if that mitigation funding disappears, the obligated municipalities, which the county is a major share of, is close to $900,000. So could be a budget pressure at some point.
Thank you. I can suggest to you a couple of things. One is that the, there has been discussion at, at the board, and I believe they have, members of the board have, and executive have passed those concerns on to ALFA, which is the association that represents local public health units. And it's shared by many across Ontario, if not all, 34 public healths. And I know that I brought it up at AMO in Roma, so it's top of, it's top of drawer in terms of the asks of the province. We expressed concern last year because it was a one-year announcement, and it came, I believe, at AMO, rather late in the, rather late in the day to, to alleviate the concerns of many boards. So we're asking for it earlier or to be rolled into the, into the permanent funding. So there are, there are some ongoing discussions, but that's one of the comments I'll be bringing on Thursday to committee the whole at AMO, and then again on Friday morning at the board meeting. So it's not, I have it at the top of my calendar every time we have a meeting. I bring it in as concerns from, what they do is, is a reporting format where they ask about concerns from each region of the province, and I always, that's one of the five that I bring up. So thank you. But remind me of it, and I'll try and report if there is any progress. I suspect the progress will come at AMO again, but I'm trying not to be cynical. And so with that, and nothing further, we can move to item number 12. Seeing no, no comments or questions or concerns, we can move to item number, item number, sorry, my page is stuck together. Item number 13 and resolutions. And could I have a mover, please? Oh, they've moved. My apologies. Sorry, wrong council chambers. And with that, any comments, concerns or discussions? Exactly. Too many different places I've been running meetings lately, and I'm just, so with that, item number 13, any comments? Seeing none, move to item 14. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none. Item number 15. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none. Item number 16. Councillor from Laurentian Valley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I find the motion to not allow electronic participation at the county council meeting a setback to where we are currently. County council members are all leaders in their own community and are here and in their own communities to look after the taxpayer. I can't see why one of these members would sit back at home instead of attending the meeting, and I think that's been proven in the last number of meetings that I've seen that everybody is here where they can be. I, I do understand that there are some provisions to allow you not to attend, but to not be able to attend virtually, I find is a detriment in not being progressive. Throughout Canada and the United States, we can travel, we have full access to secure networks that we could not only just view on YouTube the going on, but we could actually listen and participate in some of the discussion and be part of that. So technology is available, and I don't think we're using it to the fullest extent. And I would just like to share this with the rest of the members and see if there are any other feelings the same way. I personally, I go to Florida annually for, have for the last 15 years. While I'm down there for my own council, I call home daily, I get my messages, I have a computer, I can email the people, I can call them back, and I look after business. And I also can contact the municipality and take care of the business or the concerns at that time. So I think again, the opportunity to participate virtually and actually speak during the meeting would be progressive. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor from Deep River, please.
I'd like to make a motion to sever item 16 from the report, please.
Okay, a seconder? Second? Discussion? Yeah, the second was, sorry, it was councillor from our town, from our prior, I'm sorry. All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried? Okay, thank you. So we severed 16, we'll come back to that. And with that, we'll move to item number 17. Seeing no comments, questions or concerns, we'll move to number 18. And seeing none, we'll move to the report as a whole, with the exception of item numbers 16, which has been removed, or sorry, severed for a separate discussion. No comments or questions, concerns, and mover, please.
So moved, Mr. Warden.
Thank you very much. And with that, any comments, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried? Thank you very much, council, and we'll move back to item number 16. And so councillor from Deep River, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So like my colleague across the table, I think that what we, what was brought forward from staff as an amendment to our procedure bylaw hasn't been included in our package today, but for the benefit of all of county council, at the January 11 Finance and Administration Committee meeting, the recommendation for the changes to the procedure bylaw, the most significant change, the, the one that was proposed was item A4. And so this is one of the reasons that a member could join a meeting virtually was if a member had a scheduling conflict that precluded traveling to the meeting location. So I think that what's important to note here is that each and every one of us has been elected to represent our communities, and each and every one of us takes that very seriously. If we have the ability of joining a meeting because we couldn't, we just couldn't physically travel here, but we can participate in that meeting, that's what democracy is all about. And I don't think that we should be limited to our ability to have our voice at this table just by virtue of a, a one line in a procedure bylaw. I think we have a responsibility. I recognize the value of having in-person meetings, but I don't think that a scheduling conflict should, should preclude us from being able to participate. And the, the proposed change, the, the change that we're seeing in what's coming forward in this resolution today is quite restrictive, and I, and I don't think that's what this body should be doing. I don't think we should be restricting our ability to participate in this meeting. So I would, well, I'll let other people speak if they won't do.
Thank you. So I guess I'll maybe offer to, to counsel the conversation that was had and this resultant recommendation to you is not an attempt to drag members of council kicking and screaming to chambers. We recognize that people are responsible. There was some conversation about how would you manage it if you allowed some deviation from it, and then also, a number of us, I think, may have felt that in the, in our past experiences, that some members who were attending were not as attentive as they could be, and does that move the business of the, of the corporation forward and council forward? And so the, the conversation was wide-ranging, and this was the end result, and I think, you know, the, the intent was to get it to these chambers with, with a recommendation and, and gauge the level of support and move forward. And any other comments? Councillor from McNaberry's side, please.
So if I understand, my colleague from Laurentian Valley, Mr. Chair, he, it sounds like he's asking for an addition to, if for your traveling for any other reason, you can't physically be here other than the ones that are listed here, that they would be allowed to join by, virtually. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, if I might, we've had conversations and, and, and I'm sure I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, as I occasionally am, but the conversation and the worry was that our member would be away, and should something happen, might inadvertently come too close to meeting three, or to not being here for three meetings in a row. He'd read our procedural bylaw and understood the policies and wanted, wanted to bring that to my attention and to council's attention, that, you know, he had every intention to be here, but if something did occur and he missed three meetings in a row, he didn't want to put his seat in jeopardy. So it was a conscientious effort to ensure that we were fully aware of, of his circumstances, and, and he was smart enough to know that it might also impact on others at the same time. Is that a good summation?
That is correct, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. And I, supplementary, and then we'll go to the member from Deep River.
Yeah, so if there was some wording to that effect that I bumbled through before, like if you're traveling for any other reason, you can't reasonably physically be here, that you would be allowed to be virtually, I would support that.
Thank you. And then councillor from Deep River, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So recognizing what we're talking about, being away and knowing you're going to be away, but I, I think my point is more specific to, and I don't disagree with, with that, but my point is more to if we had, and I, I don't want to use the example of something random, but let's say I had a doctor's appointment this morning at 9:30, and it was done at 9:45, I could join this meeting virtually, but I couldn't drive here. So, you know, it could be a scheduling conflict. So I am prepared to put a, to move an amendment to the resolution in front of us that would replace item A4, the current one, with item A4, a member, so this would allow a member of, of this body to attend a meeting if a member has a scheduling conflict that precludes traveling to the meeting location. And I would ask for a seconder for that.
Seconded by the member from Laurentian Valley. And so my understanding of our process is that we do not discuss anything about the rest of the, the motion, we specifically discuss the amendment. Yes. So is there any, any comments on the amendment? Councillor from Petawawa, and then member from Abbotson-Bromley.
Thank you, Warden. Just a question about clarity, would any member who was attending virtually for any of these reasons still have voting rights?
I'll let Mr. Kelly answer that.
That is, that through you, Chair, Warden, that is correct. They would attend as a member of council with all privileges entitled to that member.
And councillor Abbotson-Bromley, and then I'll move to McNaberry's side.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Certainly, as this has evolved through COVID, or perhaps even backing up a little bit, the province had taken its first very, very tentative steps in the municipal act just immediately prior to, to the pandemic, wherein they were going to be providing municipal councils right across the province to have virtual attendance. However, it was highly restrictive. You, a councillor who was attending virtually could not be counted towards quorum, could not participate in, in closed meetings. Before, I think, almost any municipality had an opportunity to carefully review this and make known their positions in their own procedural bylaws, COVID struck. I don't have firm evidence to the, the fact of this, but I'm presuming why they essentially threw that right out the door was because a great number of, of councils in the province were left reeling as to how do we continue to do business if we are now locked down and can't be together, et cetera. And I'm not sure that all of them, in fact, were the ombudsman to take a careful look in those, that, those first couple of months after the emergency. couple of months after the emergency was declared, if in fact, there may be some doubt. In any event, those restrictions also, there was quickly amendments made to the municipal act to provide that, and in fact, there was even a provision that you could go ahead and meet even before you'd done that, so that you would have the capacity to adopt this. So as we were moving through, this has been amended a couple of different times to adapt to our needs through COVID. So I have certainly, throughout the process, always taken a kind of a cautionary approach, which is that I think that there is ample opportunity to add to this as our society evolves. I know right now, in the House of Commons, the Speaker is undertaking a very careful review of whether they are going to continue with their hybrid. I know that this is going on in the legislations across the province, across the country. So in fact, what we're distilling here is really the complete removal of four. We've added wording that it could be if you have scheduling conflicts. So essentially, what we're saying is, whatever reason you want, you do not have to come. I mean, the scheduling conflict is a personal issue. That could be whatever you would believe it to be. And I know that there are. I know that I farm. There are times when I've had to make the decision, and in fact, through the first term that I sat in this room, I rarely attended the April council meetings or committee meetings, simply because that is one of the busiest times of the year for me, and did not afford me. And not only did it not afford me the opportunity to be here, it also didn't really afford me the opportunity to be properly prepared if I was here. So those are kind of the key components that strike me, is we're really removing any restriction whatsoever and throwing the doors wide open. What I would submit also is that, as it says here, and now, Mr. Warden, as you have undertaken to do in our procedure, or in how you approach our procedure, certainly I was elected, but the person that sits on the upper tier is that person. Right now, it is councillor Donahue. Prior to that, it was councillor Briscoe. We all had priors. We also, within our own municipalities, have absolute authority to appoint an alternate member that can come when we have a scheduling conflict. The government has foreseen that there are going to be scheduling conflicts, so that they have provided that. Finally, with the particular issue that the councillor from Laurentian Valley has brought forward, there is within the municipal act that your seat, and it's not, it's the judgment of council, your seat is declared vacant should you miss, and I believe it's three months, it could stand to be corrected. However, the final, if that is a concern, a member has as well the opportunity to request of the council, leave to be outside of that three-month period. All of this is simply to say to council, is there are multiple opportunities to make sure that your, or my, lower-tier municipality has a voice to express at this table. And that is why I have been of the mind that we wish to proceed judiciously in how we approach this. I am fairly certain that it is going to evolve over the course of the next five to 10 years. The digital strategy, we have just begun to scratch the surface of that, and this may change. But I have concerns with respect to ultimately throwing the doors wide open for any reason that any councillor wishes to not be here, and ultimately, that is what a scheduling conflict is. If we are going to begin to enunciate, enumerate what the particular scheduling conflicts are, I think it will fill pages of our procedural bylaw. So really, what is before us is to remove any restriction whatsoever for virtual participation. And that being in mind, Mr. Warden, I cannot support and will not support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Member from McNaberry's side, please.
Thank you, Chair. So further to comments from councillor from Abbotson Bromley. I would support the amendment, but conditionally, I guess, I'm looking for some clarification. So does out of the country mean a scheduling conflict? Because I think that's the issue we're discussing. The councillor from Laurentian Valley isn't the only one, over the next number of years, that could be out of the country in something like Florida for a few months. So I'm looking for clarification on whether or not scheduling conflict is synonymous with out of the country, or as councillor from Abbotson Bromley mentioned, is scheduling conflict really covering everything, or should we be more specific?
Thank you. And that was part of our conversation at committee, and Mr. Kelly?
I'll try to discern this through you, Warden. As I understand the motion, it's a scheduling conflict that does not allow the person, the member, to attend a meeting. It would be up to the individual members' discretion what a scheduling conflict is, unless it's defined otherwise, what that is in here. So I would suggest to you that being out of the country, he's that member is scheduled to be out of the country, and it's creating a conflict to be here. So it's a scheduling conflict. It really, it comes down to some some wordings and how you feel, but I would suggest, as I see the members' hands up, the person who made the motion may be willing to clarify that point.
Member from Deep River, please.
No, I think that interpretation is right. A scheduling conflict is a scheduling conflict. What I did want to say is, evolution is a wonderful thing. And how and what we do evolves all the time, and I'm asking this body to move us into the 21st century. Let's use the tools that we have to allow us to represent our community, the County of Rentford, in any way that we can. That is our responsibility. Outside of a leave of absence, if you were going to be away for more than a period of three months or three meetings, there is an opportunity to take a leave of absence. As far as, and we also have the ability to appoint at the lower tier, an alternate. But can you imagine appointing an alternate to come and sit at budget deliberations without the history and all of the conversations that we have? You know, this issue in itself, can you imagine an alternate being dumped into this conversation without all of the history and the reports that we have? You know, so an alternate coming to multiple committees and multiple meetings makes perfect sense if somebody's going to be away for a while, but on a one-off, it's like it's like a fish out of water, in my concerns. So anyway, I just, I would respectfully ask that, you know, we all treat each other like adults. We have the ability to make the decision by ourselves as to our responsibility as an elected official in the County of Rentford, and be able to participate whenever we can.
Member Laurentian Hills, please, and then member from Arnhem Prior.
So I was one of those fish out of the water. I sat in on a virtual meeting for our mayor. At that point, it was Mayor Reinhold. And I did feel completely lost, even though I had read the package and I got as up-to-date as I could. But I think what we're, we have to read the preamble where we say that the preference is for meeting attendees to come in person. And I think if we look at that, I'm hoping that none of us would abuse that statement. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And member from Arnhem Prior, please.
Thank you, Warden. I guess I'm not up to speed on the procedural maybe. But I was under the impression somewhere along the line, when we have our meetings, there has to be a quorum of people actually in the room. Except for when we did the pandemic, you could do the the virtual. But if I remember right, we had our public meeting for planning, and we were told we had to have X amount of people here sitting in a chair. Could we not have that in place somehow, that two-thirds of the committee has to be here? Thank you.
And I see Ms. Grunt and Mr. Kelly poring through our our procedural bylaws, so I'll dance in place for a few minutes. And I do recognize your hand, member from Abbotson Bromley. Mr. Kelly?
Touching my mouse button like that's the microphone. It's that kind of weak. The intent of this was participation is participation. And the electronic participation is an extension of your time in this chamber, or the meeting location, as it were, and that results in quorum for that. So there were no provisions for electronic meeting for, at that time, perhaps, I don't know what occasion you're talking about, but that was not allowed. If you look at the last official plan meeting, you could have participated electronically as well. Well, if it was listed under one of those reasons that we currently have in there. It's
The meeting I was talking
supplementary?
Thank you, Warden. CO2, the one I was thinking of was the public meeting for the Planning Act that we had just a couple of weeks ago. We were told to be here in person. And that you could be virtual, but pretty well, most of us were here for that planning meeting. And I'm sure I got an email or something to the effect to be here, because we needed the quorum within for a public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Warden. So to clarify, that's absolutely correct, because as it stands right now, unless you were we're not in a declared emergency, so right now, as it stands, because this has not been passed, or as amended, the only four items that would not have allowed you to, or that you had to be you had to be here, except for a declared emergency, a significant weather event, of which there was not that one that night, if you're injured or ill, or you're appointed in a way for one of the board members, the boards that you may or may not sit on. Just not wanting to come that night because you didn't want to travel was not an excuse, if you will, or reason not to attend. So that's why we ask that you have to be here, because there's no other provision unless one of those provisions applied.
Thank you. Member Abbotson Bromley, and then member Greater Matowaska.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, to my colleague across the room from Arnhem Prior, I believe that may have been a misinterpretation. There would not have been a compulsion to have been here. There were elements within 6.1 that we are debating today that were in effect at the time when we had suspended the procedural bylaw, which was, I believe, for the council that ended at our inaugural meeting. That was to have provided more broad participation at the time. When that period ended, we then reverted back to our procedural bylaw, and our current procedural bylaw had, for the most part, the provisions that we are seeing today, i.e., as were enumerated by the CAO, if it was a significant weather event, if you were ill or injured, or something like that. If you met any one of those tests, then you could participate virtually. And really, all that 6.1 does with this procedural bylaw is it is that binary, whether you can or whether you can't, and then it reverts back to the municipal act that, yes, you are quorum, yes, you can participate in closed session. So what I would suggest, Mr. Warden, is it may have been a misinterpretation of what the instructions may have been, because it was not an obligation to have been present. Any member that would have met the then-in-vogue conditions could have participated publicly. And in fact, I think we did have one or two, sorry, virtually, and I believe that we did have one or two members that did participate virtually.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, and then we'll go to Greater Matowaska.
Thank you, Warden. And just to clarify, since you're not seeing, or you may not have your your blue book in front of you today, or the whole bylaw, to address the item of quorum, which I hear is being bandied about, item C, to clarify, a councillor who is participating electronically in a meeting shall be counted in determining whether a quorum of members is present at any point in time, and may participate electronically in any portion of a meeting that is closed to the public. So quorum is addressed in this entire thing. I apologize that you don't have the entire bylaw in front of you to address as a whole, but you should have received it, and I'm happy to provide same, should you wish to see it today.
And member from Greater Matowaska, please.
Thank you, Warden. Because we already have the setup for virtual meetings, there is no financial, further financial impact for this at all. Just want to clarify that.
Through you, Warden, no, there is not.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor from Laurentian Valley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I guess the only other thing I'd mention is that if there was a concern that there was going to be some abuse of that option, you could put a limit on the number of times, say, three times, but from anybody that I've met and discussed anything with in here, I can't see it in there being to abuse that opportunity to just sit at home and take it easy. They'd much prefer to be in here, and in fact, I also agree that person-to-person meeting is the best of all options, so.
Thank you. I don't want to appear to be misreading the room, but I sense there's a little confusion or ambivalence about this whole this whole resolution, or more specifically about A four. And I would suggest one thing to you, is we can go ahead and vote on the amendment, and I would be open to a motion from the floor to ask for this to go back to committee, having heard some of the dialogue, to try and come up with some language that if it's council's wish to expand the option of attending virtually, then that would be, you know, I would take a motion from the floor, advisement from the floor, to take it back to committee. So that's what I would suggest to you. Should the amendment pass, then that's a moot, that's a moot point, but I've just been looking at the faces and then the body language and the the writing of notes, I'm just a little curious at what council's wish would be. So councillor from Bonchar Valley, and then I'll take the vote.
Thank you, Warden. The only challenge with sending it back to committee is that it puts us one month, another month, where somebody might have a scheduling, like a EOR, AMO, Roma, FCM. That's the only challenge I see. But I will leave it in council's hands.
Mr. Kelly, any comment? Hate to put you on the spot, but you should be on the spot, not me.
It delays the process, but I mean, it is the wishes of this council. I just it is what it is. I would just suggest moving this motion, this amendment vote along, and see where it plays out.
Okay, thank you. So with that
Recorded, please, Mr. Chair.
Recorded vote on the amendment? And so with that?
Yeah, just hold on one second. Sorry, we're just going to get rolling here.
And I don't need a secondor for a recorded vote, or do I? No, I don't. Good, thank you.
Just one point. Can the amendment be reread, please?
Yes. Yeah, I was going to, thank you. That's a good housekeeping thing.
We just had some new calculations. I just want to make sure that Mr. Foss and I are on the same page here. I think we are. Yeah, using the new chart. Okay. 2023 changed from 2022. I just want to make sure we have that. All right, if I can, Warden?
Yes, if you could read the motion, and then we'll take the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. As I understand the amendment, that item A four, as currently written in your package, would be replaced with the wording a scheduling conflict that would not allow a member to attend at the meeting location. Does I understand it?
So to clarify, yes is affirmative and nay is a negative. Thank you.
All right, I'll start the vote then.
Please.
Councillor Bennett? For or against?
I'm sorry, Warden. I just need clarity on what I'm voting for here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. If you could, please.
Sure, thank you, Warden. So you are voting on the amendment to the resolution, as you see in here, and the amendment is to replace item A four with the wording a scheduling conflict that would not allow a member to attend a meeting at to attend the meeting at the meeting location. So a vote, if I say for, you're for that amendment, against would be against that amendment.
I'm against.
Against. Thank you. Councillor Bros?
I'm for.
Councillor Doncaster?
In favor?
Councillor Donahue?
Opposed.
Councillor Ward Nemo?
I'm opposed.
Councillor Giardini?
For.
Councillor Grills?
Against.
Councillor Yon?
Against.
Councillor Lynch?
Opposed.
Councillor Mackenzie?
In favor.
Councillor Mayville?
Opposed.
Councillor Murphy?
Opposed.
Councillor Nicholson?
In favor.
Councillor Service?
For.
Councillor Watt?
For.
Councillor Weir?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Counselor Wilmer?
For.
Just going to double-check the numbers with Mr. Foss. All right, the motion passes with a weighted vote of 119 to 89. So the amendment has passed.
Great. Thank you, counsel. Counselor from Adamson Bromley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And while I thoroughly understand that it has no bearing, the weighted vote carries the day. I wonder if Mr. Kelly could advise of what the head count was?
The eight in favor, nine against.
Thank you.
We have to get more people moving to head glare, Mariah. So Counselor Deep River, and then we'll break for lunch.
While that comment wasn't on the microphone, that's not a fair comment, that one member of this body put the vote over. Because there was eight people that devoted in favor of that on a weighted voted system. So saying it was one person that put that vote over is not accurate.
My apologies. I was just teasing here.
That's understood. Thank you. So with that, we'll take a break for lunch. Oh, oh, motion as amm, oh, I'm sorry. God, I'm hungry today. So with that, we'll vote on item 16, the motion resolution number FACC 23-0102 as amended. Counselor from Deep River.
Recorded vote, please.
Okay.
Just going to get this set up again. All right. With your indulgence, Warden, so the motion as amended. Again, I'll start with Counselor Bennett, for or against?
Against.
Counselor Bros?
In favor.
Counselor Doncaster?
In favor.
Counselor Donahue?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Ward Nemo?
I'm in favor.
Counselor Giardini?
In favor.
Counselor Grills?
Opposed.
Counselor Yon? Counselor Lynch?
Opposed.
Counselor McKenzie?
In favor.
Counselor Mayville?
Opposed.
Counselor Murphy?
Against.
Counselor Nicholson?
In favor.
Counselor Service?
In favor.
Counselor Watt?
In favor.
Counselor Weir?
In favor.
Counselor Wilmer?
In favor.
Thank you. The motion, the resolution passes with a weighted vote of 149 to 59.
And thank you. And if everybody could just check their mics, please, we had a little bit of feedback. Thank you. So with that, we'll take a break for lunch, and with your indulgence, we'll come back at 115. Thank you.
What an excellent winter stewie lunch. I love stews in the winter. So, thank you for that lunch. So with that, we will move to Operations Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. We, your Operations Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Item number one, decorative crosswalks, and attached is appendix one with a letter from, that the town of Petawawa received, and a resolution from Petawawa. And, and the rest of the background. Item number two, the reinstatement of the fees for tourism-oriented directional signing. Item number three, the request from Snow Country Snowmobile Region District Manager to relocate part of a snowmobile trail as a result of the change in the Ministry of Transportation not allowing trails along highways anymore. They've requested the use of County Road 58. Item number four, 2023 Municipal Supply and Services. Letters have gone out to all the lower-tier municipalities requesting or asking if they'd like to be part of the RFP process. Item number five, the disposition of surplus vehicles and equipment, that there was no takers for the items listed, and that they will go to proceed to public auction. I think it says soon. Not sure if that's happened yet or not. So, move on to bylaws. Item number six, Resolution Number OPCC 230105, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that council pass, that County Council pass a bylaw to accept a drainage easement over Lot 41 in geographic township of McNab, in the township of McNab-Brayside on draft plan of survey 49M-114, being part of PIN 57336-0296 LT from 2849168 Ontario Incorporated. And the background is there. Item number seven, County Road 512, Foymont Road, road widening, road widenings. Resolution Number OPCC 230106, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that County Council pass a bylaw to acquire the properties in the geographic township of Sebastopol, in the township of Bonner Valley as described below, and further that these properties described be dedicated as part of the public highway upon registration of transfer of documents. And I, unless, well, I refuse to read all of these. So, if Mr. Perkins would like to read them out, he's more than welcome to. The background is there. So this is just the acquiring more parcels of land to continue on the, the work on, on Highway Five, or County Road 512, sorry. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself, Chair, and committee members Bennett, Emon, Lynch, Mackenzie, Watt, and Wilmer.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns from members of council? Counselor from Bonner Valley, please.
My apologies. I forgot about the $1, which I have not received, by the way, Lee. I do have a pecuniary interest, because the county bought land from me for a dollar.
So I would suggest that's item number seven.
Oh, my.
So, item number seven? Thank you. Okay, so with, to the, member from Deep River, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So, just procedurally, then, we would sever item number seven from the report?
Okay.
Because we'd need to vote on it separately, or she couldn't vote on the entire report. Well, then she wouldn't be able to vote on the entire report.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to sever it, and then that would keep us clean. So, thank you. Mover is Counselor from Deep River, seconded by Counselor from Abbotson-Bromley. All those in favor to sever? Thank you. So with that, we'll go back to the report. Item number one, comments, questions, concerns? Counselor Service, or Counselor Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Counselor Doncaster. On behalf of the town of Petawawa, we'd just like to thank the county for accepting our, our letter of endorsement, and for providing us with your corporate policy. And we have formed our new EDI committee, and I think they're planning to meet early in February. So thanks again for agreeing to consult with them. And we're looking forward to that committee working together with the county to get that proposal acted upon. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, we'll move to item number two, please. Seeing no comments, questions, or concerns, we'll move to item number three. Counselor from Whitewater Region, please.
Thank you, Warden. Two questions. The first one is just, can we offer any more information as to why the Ministry of Transport is now removing that right-of-way for snowmobile users?
Mr. Davis or Mr. Perkins?
Oh, thank you, Warden, and through you to the Counselor. So MTO has a policy that they request that most trails be outside their right-of-way. So the existing trail that they had before was within that right-of-way. And so MTO, with regard to their policy, said, please be off, and that's why the arrangement with Mr. Perkins here. Thank you.
Thank you. Supplementary?
Thank you, Warden. I'm just curious, because we're going to now develop our own. Would there be any reason why we wouldn't want to do it if they've kicked them off?
Through you, Warden, to the Counselor. So, the main reason from MTO to express this is the, the volume of traffic on Highway 17 specifically. So other roads within our jurisdiction, we do not have that volume. So, basically, it's a volume issue. They're worried about the number of vehicles on the roads at the time, and with the county roads, much different. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, member for town, Deep River?
No, that's fine.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Item number four, please. Comments, questions, concerns? Item five, comments, questions, concerns? Item number six, comments, questions, concerns? The report as a whole? You'll recall, we're severing number seven, and so with that, a mover, please?
So moved.
Thank you. You've heard, you've heard the report. Any comments? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried? Thank you, council. And we'll move to item number seven. And so with that, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried? Thank you, council. And with that, we move to the Health Committee, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor from Deep River.
Sorry, just procedurally, do we need a mover for item number seven?
Oh, we do. Oh, I'm sorry. Could I have a mover for item number seven? My apologies.
So moved.
Sorry.
Point of order, though, I believe that maybe our procedural does require that to be read in full, is it not?
Yeah.
If I can clarify the answer, if that's facetious or not, I can clarify. It's actually a good question, though, sir. I mean, to clarify, maybe for the new council members, if I could have some latitude, sir. Whereas motions have been distributed or printed in the agenda, recitals need not be read. So, there you, I know. I tried for it too, sir.
So we have, we have a mover, and with that, I will ask again for the vote. My apologies. Those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried? Thank you. And we'll move to Health Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had not reached that point of the procedural bylaw yet. So thank you also, through you to Mr. Kelly for elucidating, or illuminating, rather, sorry. We are, to the members of County Council, we, your Health Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. As information items, beginning with number one, the COVID-19 pandemic update, long-term care. And the first item, and only item, in fact, before council today, is home outbreak status. It is my pleasure, actually, late breaking news just provided to me earlier this morning by Mr. Blackmore, that in fact, both homes are now out of outbreak. So certainly commend all of the, the efforts of staff that are certainly, there's a requirement to substantially step up the procedures and protocols within each of the long-term care homes. So enormous commendations. I would really love to be able to say that should be the end of that. But we still continue in the, the respiratory generally, if not specifically COVID, of influenza and RSV, but certainly, Mr. Chair, commendation to all of the staff. Item two is the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus Concerns impacting Uh, item two, uh, is the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus Concerns, uh, impacting municipal long-term care facilities and healthcare. And I believe, um, Mr. Warden, you had, uh, somewhat alluded to these, uh, in the section, uh, on, from, um, Finance and Administration with respect to, uh, some EOWC delegations with Minister Calandra. Uh, you'll certainly, I will bring forward, or underscore specifically the five items that council will see on page 168, uh, of today's report, um, as we move forward, uh, in the, uh, in the, uh, achieving that, that long elusive goal, uh, of care and a considerable number of, of implications moving forward. Item number three is the 2022-2023 Funding Adjustment for the Hours of Direct Care in Supporting Professional Growth Funding. Uh, and this is with respect to registered nurses, registered practical nurses, personal support workers, uh, allied health professions, uh, and professional support. And once again, uh, must, um, comment, uh, the province on moving us towards this. Uh, we, of course, still retain that challenge of meeting the actual individuals that are going to fill these roles. Item four, uh, Funding Case Mix Index, or CMI. Uh, and once again, this was part of the, uh, the, um, delegation, uh, Mr. Warden, that you had participated in with Mr. Calandra. Uh, for those, uh, new councillors, you may be unaware, Case Mix Index, the intent behind this is this was a mechanism through which, uh, the province began to recognize that, um, there is, has been a substantial change, uh, on, on intake, or when, um, residents first move into long-term care. Typically, we are seeing a much higher level of, of need, uh, and services and support required for these residents. And CMI, or Case Mix Index, uh, the intent behind this was to recognize this increasing challenge. Unfortunately, it is, it has, for some time now, perhaps since the, uh, the inception, uh, it has been a fixed envelope of money, and it was distributed on a, on a ratio basis, uh, i.e. on a baseline, whether you were, uh, higher than the baseline or negative, uh, below the baseline. Unfortunately, all, this is a tide that has raised all ships essentially at the same rate. Uh, so the CMI has actually not kept funding, uh, the, the increasing acuity, uh, of, uh, residents when they first take up residence in long-term care. And ultimately, that is what is, what is being put before, uh, council today through item number four. Item five is the Long-Term Care Webinar for Municipal Councillors. Uh, I did actually, um, uh, at this year's Roma Conference, uh, was quite happy to attend a session on seniors' housing needs and Lisa Levin, uh, that is the, uh, and I'm going to be very careful, I'm going to use the term executive director, I'm not precisely sure of her title within, uh, advantage, uh, but she is, uh, she is, uh, an excellent advocate, uh, and very knowledgeable on, on the long-term care sector. I would certainly encourage all of council, uh, if you can find the time, uh, it would be well worth your time. Item six is Accreditation Canada and a survey. Uh, and I will note that both homes have, uh, I'll have to look at this, exemplary standing. That is the highest level of accreditation that is afforded, uh, long-term care homes right across the country. Uh, it's enormously pleasing to me, and I'm quite certain, Mr. Blackmore and all staff, uh, to hold that, uh, rating. Uh, the intent here is to now consolidate, uh, the accreditation to the two homes that, uh, the County of Renfrew funds, uh, so that they are on the same schedule, and there is some, um, work to be done, uh, to specifically define, uh, what the governance role is, uh, as in, in participating in that process. Item seven is the Community Accountability Planning Submission. Uh, uh, this is, uh, yeah, for the Bonnershire Manor Senior Adult Day program. Those are for, uh, non-residents, uh, but it is an outstanding program that is available, uh, to the, the public, uh, to the seniors, uh, and, uh, community, uh, that do access. And I know there is significant uptake, uh, across our community. I do apologize at, uh, our committee. Uh, Mr. Blackmore did provide, uh, the, um, the current roster, if you will, uh, the current number of participants who were taking advantage of this fantastic program. At this point, it does elude me. Feel free to, uh, discuss with Mr. Blackmore, should you have that question. Uh, item eight is a, um, a, uh, very comprehensive, uh, conversation, uh, on, on the varying skills and varying sectors that our, our, uh, paramedics are now engaged in. Uh, I often refer to these as, as somewhat the County of Renfrew paramedic insurgency, uh, if you will, that we are inserting into so many different sectors. Uh, and Amber Holting has, has really embraced, uh, community paramedicine as it relates to, uh, to, um, palliative care. Uh, and, um, uh, she is, is increasingly being recognized for her, her skills and expertise in the sector. Uh, item nine speaks to, uh, an emergency management exercise, notwithstanding that we have managed, uh, perhaps the, the most intense emergency, uh, in the last century, uh, Emergency Management Ontario, still required, uh, as part of our compliance, uh, and exercise. And this is speaking to that, Mr. Warden. Uh, item 10, uh, wish to bring forward to, uh, to council, you may very well have seen this in local media, this is an outstanding contribution to our community. Uh, I'm, uh, I'm given one to, to suggest to that. Typically, when some, someone encounters a paramedic advancing towards them, they're probably not having a good day. Uh, but in this instance, uh, these paramedics are, have stepped up and demonstrated their commitment to the community in a much broader, uh, sense. Uh, and I think it's an outstanding effort, uh, in the toy drives that they held, uh, at both Renfrew and Pembroke, and want to commend also and thank and acknowledge the Walmarts in each community, uh, for providing the, the space, uh, for our paramedics to set this up. Uh, all of which, Mr. Chair, is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair, along with members Emo Grills, Jan Murphy, Nicholson, Weir, and Wilmer.
Thank you, Chair, and, and to council. Item number one, any comments, questions, concerns? Item two? Comments, questions, concerns? Item three? Comments, questions, concerns? Item number four? Councillor from Deep River, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, just curious as to if, and if we don't have the information available currently, um, if we could have a comparison on, on what the change was in the CMI from 2021 to 2022, acknowledging that the, the CMI and the funding is a year in behind. And I'm sure we will see, um, and, and maybe at Health Committee, there was certainly more discussion or information around this. And then what the financial impact, what the dollar impact is of the change in the CMI from 2021 to 2022.
Thank you. Mr. Blackmore, is that something you could offer information on?
Through you, Chair, to the councillor. The, the rates shown are actually frozen rates. So they were, would have been the rates from the year before. So perhaps you're looking for the year before that.
Sorry. Uh, I get, if they're frozen from 2021, then, then there is no financial impact between, between 2021, 2022, and 2022, 2023 funding, based on CMI?
It, I think what's being illustrated here is that the actual CMI, if I could, Chair, through you to the councillor?
Yes.
Is, um, the caracuity levels that which we can monitor internally are higher at Bonnershire Manor. In fact, they're the highest they've probably ever been. They're, they're now creeping over the 1.0, but we're being funded at 0.98. That's significance. Um, and the dollar figure, I don't know, Jeff, you could, I don't have that off the top of my head, it's something we could get for you, but it is something we did look at, um, for sure.
Supplementary, please?
So just a comment. So then for, if, if that's the CMI currently at 1.0376, then is it fair to say that we'll see an increase in funding in 2023, 2024?
Chair, through you to the councillor. It, in fact, the Mayor of Misha Lodge's CMI actually did drop a bit. So it benefited the lodge somewhat, whereas it penalized the manor being frozen.
Chair Dunninghugh? Or Chair from Abbotson Bromley? Sorry.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Warden. Just to clarify, that absolutely there is no, um, impact revenue or no impact, uh, negative or positive, if it is frozen, absolutely. Uh, but we are in fact falling behind. Uh, if council recalls the conversation with respect to the provincial government funding for long-term care, if you are not, if you are, uh, if there's a larger gap between our needs and what they are funding, there is, is beginning to be a real spread, uh, in the impact. Uh, and that was what I was trying to actually express, uh, to the council, that increasingly, uh, this is a putative, uh, recognition and funding of the dramatic increase in acuity, uh, of the residents in long-term care, both homes. Um, and, and it is not meeting the needs, uh, of what our community needs. And I know one or the other, the, you know, there's a pretty significant impact, uh, even on the amount of staff time that is now, um, allocated towards, uh, the data, the data gathering and reporting that is required, uh, on the CMI. So it is a particular, or that is exact, in fact, perhaps exasperating, um, that, that delta between what we need and what we're receiving.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to item number five. Comments, questions, concerns from members of council? Number six? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, member from Laurentian Hills.
Um, so at 1:00, 1:00 that day, we have a, uh, Renfrew County Housing Corporation meeting. I'm wondering if this could be made available to us, um, if possible, because there's no way I could get from home to here in five minutes. Is that possible?
Um, Mr. Blackmore?
Through you, Chair, to the councillor. It's, I believe in the past, Advantage Ontario has recorded their sessions, so I expect it will probably be the same in this instance as well.
Okay. Thank you. And councillor Abbotson Bromley?
Uh, perhaps we can, uh, make a direct inquiry, uh, just to ascertain whether this will be available on their website, uh, for viewing after the fact.
Through you, councillor to the Chair, through you, the Chair, to councillor, for sure, I can, I can do that.
Great. Thank you. And moving forward, seeing nothing further, item number six, please. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none? Item number seven? Comments, questions, concerns? Item number eight? Councillor from Deep River.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, I just wanted to point out, I, I did have a delegation from the town of Deep River with, uh, Minister of, um, Seniors and Accessibility, Minister Cho, um, yesterday, actually. And, uh, um, we were talking about a, a number of things with, with, in seniors' care, but the thing that came up, um, was he was very interested to, uh, learn more about the paramedic service in Renfrew County, um, and, and specifically, uh, community paramedicine. So I did, uh, reach out to Mr. Nolan and, and, uh, did provide him with, uh, the paramedic package that, uh, this council saw, so he, he wanted to know all about that. So just sharing that.
Great. Thank you. We're always happy to share information with, uh, provincial ministers. Thank you very much. And we'll move to item number nine. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none? Item number 10? Comments, questions, concerns? And just to echo, uh, the councillor from Abbotson Bromley and the Chair, a great event, it was a torrential downpour that day. Um, and we're very fortunate that Walmart extended the courtesy of allowing our, our folks to move indoors. And as always, this is a, it's a really neat event to see. Um, it's nice, and I think it's probably very nice for our staff to get out and just enjoy, kibitzing and talking to, uh, to passersby and accepting gifts, especially around Christmas time. Um, so thank you very much to Chief Nolan and, and his staff for organizing this over the years and publicizing it. It's a very, uh, it's a very well-appreciated, uh, effort at fundraising and, uh, providing comfort to our community. So thank you, and please express our appreciation to your staff. And can I have a mover, please?
Uh, so moved. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Any comments, questions, concerns on the report? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried? Thank you very much. With that, I would like to move a little differently, if you don't mind, if we could move to, um, item number 12, prior to development and property, which would be a... Oh, okay. Sorry. We won't do that. We'll wait. Just letting you know we're gonna do something a little different. So we'll move to Community Services, if you don't mind, please. That's okay.
Thank you, Warden. We, your Community Services Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item number one, homelessness enumeration point and time count. They conducted a point and time count on September 18th, and the information is attached as appendix one. Information item two, the Ontario Municipal Social Services Association Policy Conference Item number three, Service System Manager Onboarding Session. Circle Canada Limited is the new Service System Manager for the delivery of employment services in the Kingston-Pembroke region. Item number four, the grinds out of the cold service launch. They've extended their hours of operation to, uh, include overnight from 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM, seven days a week, and it will end March 31st. Information item five, Youth Wellness Hub. This service helps support a variety of needs related to mental health, substance abuse, primary care education, and housing for individuals between 12 and 25 years of age. Item number six, the introduction of Bill C35, an act respecting early learning and childcare in Canada. If passed, it will ensure the high quality of learning and care going forward into future generations. Item number seven, the Ontario Municipal Social Services Association Letter to the Ministry of Education. And that is attached. And we have bylaws. Number eight, County of Renfrew 2023 Childcare Early On and Canada-Wide Early Learning and Childcare Transfer Payment Agreement. Resolution number CSCC 23-01-01. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw authorizing the Childcare and Early Years Division in the County of Renfrew to enter a 2023 Childcare Early On and Canada-Wide Early Learning and Childcare Transfer Payment Agreement with the Minister of Education. The 58-page document is attached as appendix three. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee Members, Warden Emo, Councillors Grills, Mayville, Nicholson, and Service.
Thank you. And with that, we'll go back to item number one. Comments, questions, concerns from members of council? Councillor from North Agona Wilberforce, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I just, I want to comment, especially for those new councillors, um, this is a point and time count to help track those that are homeless within, uh, Renfrew County. And, uh, I guess the good news is that, uh, or I should say, the, the bad news is that the point and time count, and I'm sure, uh, Director Lapine will correct me if I'm wrong, it's around 41 or 42 people now. But the good news is that that's an increase from 17. And you may ask, well, why is that good news? Well, the good news about it is that there's more and more people who are homeless that are willing to come forward and, uh, participate in this point and time count, so that the county can assist and track them on their program, so that they don't, they're not those wandering the streets that don't have any connection to, uh, community services. And, uh, maybe with your indulgence, Mr. Warden, uh, Director Lapine can just speak a little bit to that.
Certainly. Director Lapine, please.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Warden, to, uh, council. The point and time count this year identified 43 individuals that agreed to have their data collected for us to determine kind of one day out of the year where we get a, a bit of information on the homelessness picture in our community. And of the, um, people who did participate, we have been able to sign up quite a few individuals for what's known as our, um, um, gosh, the, the ending homelessness across Canada. We are, um, forgive me, I'm, I'm having a, a memory lapse. Uh, we're, we're part of a, a bigger picture when it comes to homelessness, that we are partnered for Built for Zero Canada. And this is where we ask individuals who are experiencing homelessness to participate in our program, where we do intensive case management with other agencies, and the, the person involved to help get them connected to services. So we're very pleased to inform council that quite a few of the 43 who participated in the survey have agreed to sign up for our services, so that we can continue to work with them, get people housed appropriately, get access to the services that they need, so that we can help reduce the number of people who are homeless or precariously housed. I apologize for, uh, my memory lapse in, uh, the Built for Zero Canada. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? Any further comments, questions? Councillor from Armpire, please.
Thank you, Warden. Excuse me, is there a, more people in Armpire than Berries Bay, other than just the numbers? Is there more geographical area where people may be like in urban rather than rural? Thank you.
Thank you. And through you, Warden, to council, we do have information on where people reside. I can bring that back at a future meeting with specific information. What we have found is that the majority of people that did participate have identified as living in more urban centers. We believe that that's because it provides access to services. Many people who find themselves in precariously housed or homelessness tend to have issues with transportation, and often when they are able to access a service, they tend to remain in that community, partly as well because we offer an emergency after-hours assistance. And I wouldn't say just after-hours, but during the day, if somebody is homeless and needs access to a motel or hotel, we have to bring them into the community, where, closest community to them. So if somebody, for example, is living rurally, precariously housed rurally outside of Armpire, we would bring them into Armpire for access to a hotel or motel there. And then what we have found is that they want to remain in that community. So when we do the survey, for the most part, folks are identified as being more urban, but we do have folks rural as well. But I will get specific demographic information to you shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor from Deep River, please.
Thank you, Warden. Number of occasions, what I just noticed was people were very being, maybe not careful, but being very clear that the 43 people who are experiencing homelessness, and the other term, sorry, is the 43 that participated. So what I'm wondering is, and I acknowledge that, you know, we haven't issued a crystal ball to any of our staff, but do we have a better understanding of what the real number is?
Director Lapine, please.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to council. We don't have exact numbers. What we have are numbers as this particular day where we captured data. We also have numbers that reflect the number of people we're working with, but this is one of the challenges that is seen across the province and why the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing mandated that all service managers on an annual basis must do a survey to have a better picture. What we find is that there are people who do not want to participate in surveys, and for that situation, we don't always have a good capture. What we do have is lots of contact with different agencies. We find some of the same people are on those agency lists, but again, there is no exact number in terms of homelessness. We know it's higher than 43. We know that. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to item number two. And then item number three. Councillor from Whitewater Region?
Thank you, Warden. This is one item that, at committee, took me a couple times to completely appreciate the significance of it. I just would hope that we might be able to get further updates on how this transition of services, not just affecting our own internal mechanisms, but also the community as a whole, how it might affect employment in the, in the Renfrew County offices that it applies to. For me, it's a little bit of a warning bell that, how it transitions may affect us more than we can anticipate. The director may be able to provide a better summary than I just did.
Director Lapine, please.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to council. Circle Canada being the new Employment Ontario for the Kingston-Pembroke area, the director sent me an email yesterday, and we have set up a meeting for Monday afternoon to have a, via Teams and Zoom, but a meeting with just Circle Canada and the County of Renfrew Employment Services staff, like our management team, to start those conversations. So what I plan to do, most likely through the Ontario Works Report, is bring back to community services on a monthly basis, updates on Circle Canada. They are anticipating that we're going to meet monthly, we're going to have some face-to-face meetings, where they're going to come here as well, because we definitely want them to really have a good sense of the geography that we are dealing with here, and so that they're more aware of the services that are delivered here. But I endeavor to bring that through the Ontario Works Report into committee on a regular basis. And certainly, we'll bring back any questions that do arise, back to them for answers, to bring back to council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move to item number five. Questions, comments? I'm sorry, item number four, and then item number five. Item number six. And councillor from North Agona Wilberforce, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and maybe just for clarification to Director Lapine, is this supposed to, because I know a lot of the discussion at the conference was about breaking that cycle of poverty, and it starts with the education of our children, and is this intended to provide that same level of education to clients who are on Ontario Works or ODSP, so that they don't get lost?
Director Lapine?
Thank you, Warden, and thank you for the question. For council's information, the intent, I believe, in this particular change or bill is to enshrine global language as it relates to childcare and earlier across Canada. So as you may know, the, in Ontario, the Childcare and Early Learning Program, which is often coined as $10 a day daycare, is already in place in many provinces. What is anticipated is that there's going to be a standardization of the language and of the, the level of care that all provinces would need to follow when it comes to childcare and early learning. In terms of specifics with Ontario Works and ODSP, that's a provincial, those are provincial programs. In terms of the language of the bill, I would have to go through it to ensure that social assistance is identified, because social assistance has different names in each province, but it is my understanding that they want to standardize that all children are entitled to and will receive quality childcare and early learning at a young age. I will confirm the language, though, and come back to you with that. Thank you.
Thank you. And item number seven. And the resolution, and item number eight. The report as a whole. Can I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Thank you. You've heard the report. All those in favor? Opposed, none, it's carried, thank you, council. And since I announced that we were going to do this, we'll go ahead and do it. With that, I'd like to move, motion to move to close to discuss information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board by Canada, a province or territory, or a crown agency of any of them regarding flood mapping program and active transportation funding. I could have a mover, please? Mover, councillor Township of Bonshire Valley, mover, the town of Armpire councillor. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, none, it's carried, thank you.
Thank you, and we've returned from closed, and we are now going to hear from the Development and Property Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. To the council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of county council, we, our Development and Property Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item number one is the Zen City Public Engagement. This is a tool that can be accessed and shared with all of the lower tier. Good news step moving forward. Item number two is the Rural Economic Development RED Funding Announcement, and this is in regards to economic development on a strategic plan and Economic Development Summit. Item number three is the Selling Food Workshop, and OMAFRA is working with the county to host the Selling Food to Ontario Workshop in late March 2023. Item number four is the Economic Development Municipal Roadshow. Again, an opportunity for lower tiers to have economic development staff attend your municipality. Item number five is the State of Ontario Tourism Industry Report for 2022, and the highlights are attached. Item number six is the Campaign to Extend the Ontario Stacation Tax Credit. Item number seven is the Renewal of the OVTA County of Renfrew-City of Pembroke Agreement, which is a five-year partnership. Item number eight is the 2023 Ottawa Valley Roadmap. Item number nine is the 2022 Ontario Tourism Award Winners, which are indicated below. Item 10 is the Enterprise Renfrew County Workshop Series, which are, the dates are attached. Item number 11 is the French Language Service Grant, which was approved. Item 12 is the County Forest Harvest Tender Results, and they are attached. Item 13 is the Integrated Community Housing, and of course, the details are also attached, and this is in regards to the housing units proposed for Lee and Douglas Street. Item 14 are the Planning Orientations, and this is a planning 101 session workshop for the lower-tier councils. Item 15 is Bill 23, More Homes Built Faster Act for 2022, and Mr. Howarth is with us, so he can certainly speak to this once we go through the report. Which includes development charges, third-party appeals, third residential units, subdivision approvals, the Ontario Land Tribunal, site plan control, parkland dedication, and conservation authorities. Item 16 is Ontario's housing supply crisis. Item 17 and Resolutions, Official Plan Amendment Number 35, Resolution Number DP-CC-23-01-04, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. County Council accepts the revisions to Official Plan Amendment Number 35 and directs the Development and Property Department Planning Division to further consult with the established Bill 109, More Homes for Everyone Act 2022 Working Group, and the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing ahead of scheduling another public meeting, and that background is attached. And on to bylaws. Item number 18 is the Permanent Public Transit Program Active Transportation Fund, Resolution Number DP-CC-23-01-01, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. That County Council pass a bylaw to enter into an Active Transportation Fund (AFT) contribution agreement for Algonquin Trail Active Transportation Enhancements with the Minister of Intergovernment Affairs, Infrastructure and Communities, confirming that it meets all the requirements of the Active Transportation Fund Agreement, and further that the warden and clerk be authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the County of Renfrew. Once again, the background information is attached. Item number 19, Summer Company Plus Starter Company Funding, Resolution Number DP-CC-23-01-02, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. County Council pass a bylaw to transfer $3,300 of unspent summer company program funding to the Starter Company Plus Program under the terms of the Transfer Payment Agreement referenced in Bylaw 66-22, being a bylaw to execute a transfer payment agreement for the provision of financial support for Enterprise Renfrew County from the province of Ontario, and the details are attached. Item number 20 is the Roger Communications Inc. Cell Tower, Resolution Number DP-CC-23-01-03, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. That County Council pass a bylaw authorizing the warden and the clerk to execute a self-to-self transfer deed of land for Part Lot 3 and 4, Concession 3, geographic township of Raglan in the township of Brudinell-Lindock Raglan. Again, the background is attached. Item 21, the repeal of Official Plan Amendment Number 29, OPA 29, Resolution Number DP-CC-23-01-05, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. That County Council pass a bylaw to repeal Bylaw 102-18, being a bylaw to adopt Amendment Number 29 to the official plan of the County of Renfrew. Again, the background is attached. Item 22, Natural Resources Canada, Inarcan Flood Hazard Identification and Mapping Program, FHIMP, funding application, Resolution Number DP-CC-23-01-09, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council pass a bylaw authorizing the warden and the clerk to enter into an agreement with the province of Ontario, Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry through the Natural Resources in Inarcan for the Flood Hazard Identification and Mapping Program. The background is there. And that is all which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members, Bennett, Eamon, Lynch, McKenzie, Zervey, Watt, and Weir.
Thank you, Chair. With that, council, item number one, comments, questions, concerns? Item number two? Item three? Item four? Item five? Number six? Number seven? That's been a very good partnership prior to this last contract that's lapsing. It had been on a, if I remember correctly, almost a year-to-year basis, and it did cause some, some longer discussions, and then once, once we agreed upon it with the last five-year contract, things have been very smooth with, with our partners, the city of Pembroke. Number eight? Number nine, for your information, we have sent out letters of congratulations to Mr. Kowalski and Summer Inn in Calabogie, and to Oto. Number 10? Number 11? 15? Counselor from Bonshire Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. If you have not already, I would urge any local municipality to engage with our amazing planning department. Bruce and Ann came and did, I think, two hours? Two hours with Bonshere Valley. It was a great refresher for me, amazing for our new members of council, and Bruce and Ann will take you through all of, not only Bill 23, but Bill 109. So, that's my pitch for you.
Thank you. And Counselor from Emerson Bromley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just lest any member of council feel daunted by that, my council attitude, we managed to get through it in 50 minutes, so.
Perfect, thank you. So you only have two zones? And with that, we'll move to item number 16. Item number 17? And? Thank you very much, Mr. Howarth, for this, the charts. It's very helpful to help, to assist me especially in focusing in conversation with others, so I really appreciate the way you've laid this out. Item number 18? Item 19? Item 20? Item 21? Item 22? And with that, could I have a mover, please?
Some move, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Discussion on the report as a whole? I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried? Thank you, council. And let me just... Okay, and with that, I would, oh, I'm sorry. CNL, Mr. Counselor from the town of Rempire, you have dropped a report on our desk?
I just wanted to...
Yep. Do you wish to speak to it? Your CNL report?
I just wanted to...
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna touch on it.
I was just gonna...
Okay. Okay. Sorry. So, Counselor?
Yeah. Does matter about the order of march? I thought I was the last guy, but we can work through this. Thank you, Warden. There was three meetings for the CNL over the past period. First and second were on the 22nd of November. The first one was Environmental Remediation Management Presentation. Rose has sent out the, my notes, but the summary is, this presentation is available on YouTube. The land is owned by CNL... The land is owned by CNL, and even after remediation, will still be restricted to entry by the public. Changes in the closure of the site was closed to be one hundred years, now it's indefinite. Two definitions were now made in law. Unsaturated soil is usually topsoil, saturated soil is found under unsaturated soil, and possibly water tables. Plan is to get rid of the small locations and move to the big one. Some of the low-level materials will be stored in long-term grounding holding pit. High level will be stored in a new facility. Parkland is defined as having no more than two hundred hours per year on the site. Other meeting we had was on the seventh of December, twenty-twenty-two, and it was the groundbreaking ceremony in Chalk River where the warden and I attended. It's now called the Advanced Nuclear Materials Research Centre, ANMRC. The big note is this investment will ensure that Canada's national nuclear laboratory is equipped with a state-of-the-art facilities, befitting a tier-one nuclear nation, as we embark on the urgent mission of developing next-generation nuclear technologies to drive our country's ambitious climate reduction forward. Of note, the eight-hundred-and-thirty-three-million ANMRC will be one of the largest nuclear researches facilities ever constructed in Canada. The ten-thousand-square-foot-meter research complex will have twenty-three research laboratories, accommodate one-hundred-and-sixty employees, and consolidate key capabilities from aging facilities that are scheduled for decommissioning. In a nutshell, with the advance in CNL, economic will definitely be going forward in the years to come. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. And I apologize to council, I'm skipping all over. For some reason, I had folded the bottom of the second page down and didn't see that we're getting to it on the agenda. I had written a little note to myself on the back of it, and it was my mistake, I apologize. Any comments for Counselor from the Town of Armpryor? Seeing none? Thank you. So with your permission, I'll go back to the twenty-twenty-three Ontario Winter Games. It's not a report, it's more of a very quick update. As you know, February second, we start, and it runs through until Sunday, February the fifth, and then we have a second opening ceremony, February the ninth, until the Sunday, which is February the twelfth. We have approximately eight competitions during the first week, and then the rest fall on the second week. So the first week really allows us to fine-tune our, to fine-tune our game, so to speak, because we have approximately a thousand, I believe, eleven hundred participants coming the first week, and then approximately fourteen hundred the second week. So we anticipate getting better as it rolls along. Everything is ready to go, and I'll be reaching out to you this weekend. I made a request for assistance with medals. I don't have a specific schedule just yet, because we're still working out details. Some of the provincial sporting organizations want to be part of the medal ceremony and have their own celebrities who they would wish to take part in it. So we're just waiting for some information from them, confirming it. And it's going really great. It, as, you know, as I've said repeatedly, this is probably one of the most interesting things I've ever done, and really excited about it. And we had two volunteer training nights. One was on last Thursday in Renfrew, and then the other one was Tuesday evening at Valor in Petawawa. The Renfrew event attracted about three hundred volunteers to come and sign up. Some signed up, and some, and the rest were there for training, they all were trained. And then last night, I believe, was around four hundred. And so thank you to the Town of Petawawa for broadcasting on their electronic signs for us. So we're really enthusiastic about it. We're still looking for more volunteers, and I'll be able to give you a fairly positive report about our sponsorship program at the next, at the next session of County Council. We are, people still can buy merchandise on our, on our website, and they can still donate to assist us in producing the games. So thank you. I hope you're able to attend, but I will be reaching out to most of you Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, by phone, and we'll work out some of the details. But as I said, we're counting on you as ambassadors at events and to represent us in some of the medical, medical, sorry, some of the medal ceremonies. And so, thank you very much. And with that, we would then move to, if I can get a mover and a seconder, for the bylaws listed on item thirteen and hatch, and attached hereto Schedule A on the County Council Agenda dated January twenty-five, twenty-twenty-three be deemed read three times and passed. So if I could have a mover, please? So Counselor North Agona Wilberforce, Counselor from Laurentian Hills. And you've heard the motion discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried? Thank you very much. And now I will go back to the agenda. So having said that, Associations and Municipalities of Ontario, I do not have a report for you. I'll have it for next County Council. We meet, as Mr. Kelly noted, or as was noted in the address I meet this week, we met in November, and the information is better updated in, at the end of February. And Counselor from Bonshire Valley, Eastern Ontario Regional Network.
Thank you. I have nothing to report, other than what was in the newsletter. I will have more information at the end of February.
Thank you. Counselor for the Town of Deep River.
Thank you, Warden. So FCM, our last series of meetings was held December five to eight in Ottawa, affectionately known as Advocacy Days, where the Board of Directors met with a number of parliamentarians, including Prime Minister Trudeau, Minister of Intergovernmental Affairs, Infrastructure and Communities, Dominique LeBlanc, numerous MPs from the official opposition, and the NDP leader, Jack McSing. There were a number of high-profile meetings. I'm not going through this, everybody can read, so I'm not going to go through it in any great detail. But if there are any questions on that, I would like to highlight that a lot of the advocacy that we were doing was, was putting forward what the municipalities or what FCM is asking the federal government to include in Budget twenty-twenty-three. I would like to highlight that, well, the highlight for me was the fact that the Chair of the Rural Forum has, is seeking a provincial nomination in Alberta. So in order to do that, he has to take a leave of absence, so he's done that. So I was tasked with hosting the Honorable Guti Hutchings, the Minister of Rural and Economic Development, on December sixth, and we met. And we met for about an hour. I was joined by FCM staff member and three other elected officials that sit on the Rural Forum. Our objective at this meeting was to, to further build the relationship that we have with Minister Hutchings as, as a collaborative partner of FCM and the federal government, and to highlight the FCM, FCM's priorities for Budget twenty-twenty-three. I, I highlighted our pleasure with the top-up of the Universal Broadband Fund that the Prime Minister announced in November, I believe he was in New Brunswick at the time, and, and our shared goal of getting every Canadian connected to high-speed internet, and highlighting that we still have a long ways to go, and the need for dedicated funding for smaller ISPs, and not just the major, the major companies that are involved with broadband internet. I also highlighted that the week before, that FCM staff appeared at the House of Commons Transportation Committee and their study of inner-city bus transportation, and, and that FCM is developing a strong partnership with the government on rural public transit through the Rural Solutions Transit Fund. I presented to Minister Hutchings with four priorities from the, from the Rural Forum. The, number one, the next generation of infrastructure, we're looking, we're continuing to look for the government to work directly with FCM to design and deliver the next generation of infrastructure programs that meet the local delivery needs. As most of us will be aware, that most of the existing funding programs that are in place right now are coming to an end, so those need to be updated. This includes the, the continued advocacy for the doubling of the Canada Community Building Fund, and also an indexing of that fund on an annual basis, which would give us more sustainable and more predictable funding moving forward. And I believe the previous agreement was ten years, so, so that's, that's still, that's still what we're trying to negotiate. Certainly highlighted RCMP retroactive costs, the climate, climate adaptation, and the, the need for long-term funding to build resilient communities and protect communities from hurricanes, floods, and wildfires that we're experiencing nowadays. Housing and affordability, housing affordability and homelessness, highlighted that. Minister Hutchings is, I think I wrote in here, a steadfast partner, but she's a, she's a real friend of FCM's and the Rural Forum. She's from rural Newfoundland, and, and she really gets it. So she's always very supportive of what we're doing. She gives us suggestions on how we should be putting things forward, not only to, to her, to her ministry, but to, to other ministries. So while, and I mean this in the, in the, in the best way, she was certainly non-committal on our, on our financial asks, but certainly acknowledged them and acknowledged the need that municipalities have. And just one further thing, that our next set of meetings are March seventh to ninth. Happy to say they're in Ajax, so I don't have to travel very far. And as the Chair is, will still be on his leave at that point, I will be chairing the Rural Forum at the meeting on March seventh. And I did add, I didn't want to add any time to, to the Social Services Chair, Counselor from Laurentian Hills, part of this meeting, but I did meet yesterday briefly to start to set the agenda for the Rural Forum for March, and I did have added to the agenda homelessness, attainable housing, and homeless encampments to that agenda, so we don't have that all set up, but I will leave it there. Mr. Warden?
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions, concerns from the report? Well done, and congratulations on, on being offered the Chair. Glenn and I were talking yesterday, and he announced that, and I thought it was great, and wished him well, and I don't think he's expecting that response. Thank you. So the member from North Agona Wilberforce, please.
I'm just curious if Mr. Doncaster knows when the feds are going to stroke us a check for housing and homelessness.
You'd think the Chair would know something like that, eh? Good luck with that, thank you.
If it's directed towards me, no, I don't have...
Just sort of throwing out the ether to see who's paying attention in the meetings.
I'll look into it.
Yeah, thank you. So with that, very quickly, Roma, nothing to report. The focus obviously was on the, on the conference, and I'll get you information. I believe I meet towards the end of February for the Roma Board again, and...
Seventeenth.
Oh, on the seventeenth? Perfect, thank you very much. Oh, yes, good. You can tell me when to go. That's awesome. I need somebody to help me recently. When? When? When to show up? When to open my mouth? When to shut it? So it's, it's exciting time. There are, I think, three members of Roma from the last iteration, and I, and I would encourage you to take a look back four or five years, just to see the progress of Roma. It's become quite an activist and visionary board, and with a nice touch of aggressiveness, too. And so I think, you know, it's going to be a really interesting group. Had a conversation with everybody, and looking forward to it. So with that, I would then ask for notice of motions. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Bonshire Valley.
Thank you, if I may, Mr. Warden. I just, while we're on Roma, I was going to do it in new business, but I'll do it now. I just wanted to thank all the members of Renfrew County for endorsing my candidacy for the Roma Board. Thank you to all that came to Roma and supported our amazing staff as well, you know, people campaigning on my behalf, my campaign manager, Mark Mackenzie. Huge shout-out to Billy Denault from Armpryor, who is helping, and I promise I'll do you guys proud. I'm really excited to be a part of this board.
And to that end, notice of motions? Seeing, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor from Deep River.
Sorry, not specifically a notice of motion, but I just want to reiterate a comment that the warden made at one of the delegations on Monday, the fact that we have representation at AMO, Roma, and FCM, so the minister was sitting in front of some very important people.
I said influential. Yeah, just, you know, trying to put a little bazzaz in it. Thank you. I'd forgotten about that. I think they believe me, too. And so with that, members' written motions. And number seventeen, new business. And Counselor Amos and Bromley?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just, for those who may not have checked their emails, in response to Counselor GRD's inquiry through the Health Committee Report, Mr. Blackmore has verified that in fact the, the online webinar will be recorded and posted on the website, so I think that anyone that may have a scheduling conflict can view it after the fact.
I would just add, I believe you still have to register, though, for the event, so...
Thank you. Any other Counselor from the Town of Armpryor, and then the Counselor from the Town of Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Warden. On behalf of the Town of Armpryor Council, I'd like to thank our Roma delegates and staff that attended for taking one of our newest and youngest council members under their wing at this conference. This ensures you know more important how this, this conference is, and again, thank you. And he was instrumental with the new representative from county. Well done.
To meet Steve Clark.
Awesome.
Yeah, he, he was just a real joy to be around. It's nice to see someone a bit younger and so enthusiastic. Lots of good questions. Yeah, yeah. I've got socks older than him. And I don't mean that disparagingly, he's twenty-two. But he, yeah, just a really nice person, eager to learn, and a lot, and interesting and fun to be around, so thank you. And kudos to you for reaching out to us and asking us to make sure you got the guided tour, so thank you for that. And Counselor from the Town of Petawawa?
Thank you, Warden. I just want to thank Counselor Murphy for keeping us all fresh, so that we can all talk in close quarters today.
All right, thank you. Any other new business? Frufast in Renfrew, if you're driving through this weekend, stop, spend some money, and there's some free stuff, too, but we'd prefer if you spent money and then go do the free stuff. But we have a bunch of summer or winter activities, and we appreciate your joining us. Counselor Amos and Bromley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was woefully remiss. This is the Frosty Fun Weekend in Douglas, our annual winter carnival. I believe it's at, this may be number forty-seven, the forty-seventh annual. So I would invite everyone to please join us in beautiful downtown, while it's kind of midtown, Douglas, over the three days this coming weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. And do I remember seeing something in the paper about Rankin or Shady Nook or one of them doing something as well? Counselor what? Counselor Laurentian Hills?
That was the Alice in Wonderland. It's on all week long and ends this weekend, so, yeah.
Great. Thank you very much. Oh, Counselor Petawawa and Counselor Laurentian Hills.
I guess if everybody's tooting their own horn here. Cabin fever, the second weekend is coming up this weekend in Petawawa, lots of fun activities taking place, so you're all welcome to come and join us in Petawawa.
Thank you. Counselor Laurentian Hills, please.
The Chalk River and area Lions Annual Winter Carnival is January twenty-eighth to February fourth, so if you're up our end of the valley, please drop in. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And with that, could I have a mover and seconder, that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the County of Renfrew at the meeting held on January twenty-five, twenty-twenty-three, be now numbered, deemed to read three times and read, three, read three times and passed? I really apologize. I'm not sure what's going on today. Counselor Laurentian Hills, Counselor Petawawa? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried? Thank you very much, and I would accept a motion to adjourn, so I would take it from Counselor Madawaska Valley and Counselor of Laurentian Valley. All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried? Thank you. Thankfully, nobody's here from the Green Valley.